Good evening. This is the Municipality of Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission for February 4, 2013 at 6:40 PM. May I have the roll call, please, from the Secretary?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Cruz. Peter Mulcahy. James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this particular point in time, I would like to formally welcome John Spring to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We look forward to your service and your participation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
For the minutes of the meeting for Monday, December 10, 2012. Do we have minutes? All right. I've just been informed that we will not be doing the minutes at this particular point in time. Under a special order of business, Vice Chair Parks, would you please manage the disclosures?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I have, for the record, I was not a member of the Commission on January 7, 2013, will be abstaining from voting on Resolution 2013-03.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Commissioner Dean?
For the record, I was not present on the September 17, 2012, meeting and will not be abstaining from the vote on Resolution 2012-047.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
None.
Commissioner Ferguson?
None.
I have none. And Commissioner Yoshimura?
Yes, in the matter of S-11864-4 and S-11864-3, I am a member of the Potter Creek Development LLC and therefore will be recusing myself from those two items. I also wish to acknowledge that previously I have identified the Chugatch Access Plan for 2012-104 as having, being a member of an LLC that is adjacent to the Chugatch State Park. For clarification purposes, that is in the Eagle River Valley area. It is not in, on the hillside area. And previously, this Commission has voted to have me participate in those proceedings. Thank you.
And what is the wish of the Commission on the latter that she mentioned? We had previously said that she needed to participate?
That's a...
Stacy? I'm sorry?
I move to have Connie participate.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. And do I have any issues with that? Then, Madam Chair, you'll be asked to participate in that particular case.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the...
Could we have a motion on her participation in the two cases that she has, that she's a member of the LLC in? That would be Agenda Item S-11864-4 and S-11864-3?
Jill, she has to be reclusive for those, and I think that's probably what we ought to do. Do we have to have a motion for that? Okay. Can I have a motion for that, please?
In the matter of S-11864-4 and S-11864-3, I move to ask Connie Yoshimura to participate, but I will not be supporting my motion.
Have a second for that?
I have seconded the motion, and I also will not be supporting that motion.
Okay. Let's see. Can we have a vote on that? I assume that that's going to be two, and I would also not be supporting that motion? Do we need to vote on that? You going to put it up?
I can do a record unanimous and then take Connie off as an abstained after...
Okay. That's fine.
Before I post it to the web.
Okay.
I will not be supporting the motion.
I will not support the motion. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. You're going to do the consent agenda.
Well, she actually, I believe...
Well, she didn't, but she...
Yeah.
Can we go back in?
Ma'am, ma'am.
I need to...
On just this one right on? Yesterday called, but you said agendas. You want me to do that? I only got four of us here. Well, she's in the consent agenda, but I can ask you to do it to the end? Yes, please. Go ahead and do it.
For the Commissioners' information with regard to the consent agenda, the resol, I need a motion to pull the resolution and to pull the time extension because Connie has left the room. We no longer have a quorum for the approval of the resolution, so I need a motion to pull that. I mean, I need one of the Commissioners to pull it and move to hear it at the end of the agenda. And...
Commissioner Ferguson, do you want to make that motion?
In the matter of Case S-11864-3, Potter Creek Development, and in Case 2013004, an administrative appeal of the same?
No. Sir, I'm one.
So, I need a motion to, we're going to, I need someone to pull both consent agenda items from the agenda, and then I need a motion to move the Resolution D-1A to the end of the agenda when Connie's present and we have enough votes to approve it.
Could we move the whole consent agenda to the end of the meeting?
No, sir, because we will need to offer a short board on Item D-4. That's why that one, D-4A, needs to be pulled because we don't have enough members.
So, we need to pull D-4A?
Let's start with that.
I'll make a motion to pull Item D-4A.
And move it to the...
And move it to the end of the agenda.
And we have a second by Ms. Dean. And do we have any issues with that?
Any objections?
No. Okay. No objections? We're going to come back to that. Okay. Then that, we will, we will pull that one and deal with it in a moment.
And a clarification, that's D-1A?
Okay. I... All right.
Okay.
Okay.
And I will adjust the vote tally after the meeting.
Okay. And...
Now, I need a motion to pull Consent Agenda Item D-4A and...
All right. Move it. Okay. I'll make a motion to pull...
I'm sorry. I don't need a motion yet. I just need it pulled from the consent agenda. So, if you offer to pull it, that's good.
Next one.
How do I...
You just say, "I wish to pull that."
I wish to pull Consent Item D-4A from the agenda.
Thank you.
Now, we need a motion to move D-1A to the end, right?
Point of order. Don't we need a motion to approve the consent agenda before items are pulled from it?
Um, I've had that been done both ways. If you would prefer to have it done, I've had, I'm sorry, with the different boards and commissions, I have one commission that pulls the items and then votes on it, and this commission has done it both ways. I have not found it written anywhere, but I have looked. Would you be more comfortable if we move to approve it? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. 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 And could I have the petitioner for Case Number S-11864-4 come forward, please?
Mr. Chairman, my name is David Grenier with Tribe Engineering. And...
Good evening. We, I want to give you notice that we are on a short board, a member of the Commission, and a postponement is offered to you if you agree. And they'll be moved to the next regular agenda. This should occur within 30 days, which does not require any re-noticing for this case. If you're willing to postpone but unable to attend the next available meeting within the next 30 days, the petitioner will have a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain he or she can attend at no extra charge. When a proponent is requested by the petitioner, there is a rescheduling fee, and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the Planning Department. This will put the case in for the next available cutoff date, queue if there is not submitting their case for the first time. And what is your wishes?
Mr. Chairman, we are in agreement with the postponement to the next available meeting.
Thank you. And would you, the next available meeting, which will be, I think, February the 11th? Or March 4th? One of the two. We're not sure about the 11th as of this date.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. Sorry for the short board.
That's okay. We also have the second case. Just...
Stay right there. Want to deal with that?
Yes. I need a motion from the Commission to postpone Case D-4A to the next available meeting, which we offered him a motion, we offered him, and he has to accept, and then we do the motion from there.
Clear the board. More?
It won't let him take it because I haven't cleared it. I need to reset it.
I need to reset it. Get your end out of my hand. In the matter of Case G-2A 201304, I'll make a motion that we postpone it to February 11th or March 4th, depending on...
Availability.
Availability of the board.
And that is D-4A, not G, not the G case. We're doing the one from the consent agenda?
I do not have a D-4. Okay. It's a D-4A.
And we're postponing D-4A, which is Case S-11864-4, a motion to postpone to February 11th or March 4th.
That is correct.
Okay. And what about a second?
Do I have any...
Any objection? No objection?
No. No, we also have this other case. And the petitioner for S-11864-3, would they please come forward, too?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My name is David Grenier with Tribe Engineering.
And I assume that you want to postpone this because of the short board, as we've talked about earlier.
That is correct.
Thank you. And can I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Chair, I, in the matter of Case S-11864-3, I move that we postpone that case to February 11th or the next available meeting.
And we have a second with Mr. Ferguson. Any comments? And I think that's approved also. Okay. Now, we can call back in. I would like to make an announcement for the public that if anybody is here in the Potter Creek Development, Case Number One, or S-11864-3, that has been postponed. And the other one that's been postponed because of a short board would be Case Number S-11864-4, Potter Creek Development. Either one of those, if you're here, we will not be hearing those cases this evening. Thank you.
In, we are now proceeding to e unfinished business and actions of the public hearing, Case 2012-104. The petitioner is the Municipality of Anchorage. It's the element of the comprehensive plan for Chugatch Access Plan. The public hearing is closed, and this case has been postponed several times. What is the wish of the Commission? Ms. Dean? What? I can't, I am, hang on just one second. Okay. Ah, I apologize. I now have my screen. Commissioner Parks?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone and reopen the public hearing on Case Number 2012-0104, the comprehensive plan for the access for Chugatch State Park.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a motion first to withdraw the motion that is on the floor before we can move forward with a postponement.
So moved.
And seconded by Ms. Dean?
Yes.
All right. Any objections? All right. Seeing and hearing none, so moved. All right. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Case Number 2012-104, the Municipality of Anchorage for the element of the comprehensive plan for Chugatch Access Plan, I make a motion that we postpone this until we can reopen the public hearing and notice those who are in direct access to this property, the property owners that are in direct access, as we had instructed the staff to do at a previous meeting.
All right. Thank you. This has been seconded by Ms. Dean. Ms. Dean, would you like to speak to your motion, to your second?
Yes. Thank you. I think that it would be important for any property owner that abuts the park. It was suggested by another Commissioner that we notify any property owner within 1,000 feet of the boundary of Chugatch State Park, that many people may be affected that might just live across the street from the park, that may not exactly have a property line that they share with the park. I'd like to open that up as a possibility, if maybe we could amend the motion. And another potential amendment also is for better maps to be offered by Chugatch State Park for us to view.
All right. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand from previous discussions the Commission's desire to notify property owners and that are in close proximity to the boundary of Chugatch State Park. I do want to ask perhaps the body as well as staff on the issue of precedence of what, you know, what we're setting. I mean, I view this as an element of the comprehensive plan. If we have neighborhood or district plans, the practice is not to notify, you know, every property owner within the particular district, though arguably all of them will be affected in some way by such planning action. So, I guess I would just like to ask that this body be very clear as to why this is a different issue. I don't, I think that we've, you know, kind of operate under the premise when we deal with district and neighborhood plans and comprehensive plans, that general publication or noticing in papers or, you know, however we do it is adequate, and that direct mail to every individual property owner is not necessary. So, I think I'd just like to understand the distinction and make sure we're not establishing some sort of precedent to notify everybody within the municipality. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dean and then staff, please.
The thought was that basically that this could be viewed by a court system potentially as a taking of property, should Chugatch State Park designate your lot to be the new trailhead or access point to the park. So, with this being clarified, I think it's very possible that we may alleviate potential court issues in the future.
Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, I think that one of the major reasons for, in this particular case, to notify those within 1,000 feet of the property is that it's such a wide diversity of group, and that they may not be active in a particular neighborhood program, nor that neighborhood program may not have taken the action for it. And because it's so large and it affects the whole city, basically, and the number of access points that they're looking for in the plan, though I don't think it's their intentions to use all of them, I think that needs to be very much addressed with the public. So, if they say that they're going to do five or six potential locations in a neighborhood where they only really plan on doing two or three, but they're giving multiple location, that needs to be expressed to the public. And I think this is the form to do it, not with the Assembly.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Ms. McConnell what the appropriate procedure is and if she could speak to the historical perspective regarding the question that Commissioner Tyler has raised. Please. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my experience, my 10 years at the municipality, I'm not aware of a situation where we have mailed notice to property owners for a comprehensive plan element.
Thank you. Could you also speak to your prior email regarding the protocol for reopening the public hearing? So, could you, we want to make sure that if we choose to do that, we're following the correct procedure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is completely within your prerogative to reopen the public hearing, and I believe the Secretary has guided you through both removing the motion that was on the floor at the time and then making a new motion to reopen, so that's perfectly fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ferguson?
In regards to notice in the comprehensive plan, this is a slightly different comprehensive plan because it is spotty. It's not a comprehensive plan of all of Government Hill. It is, it's unique to several, I don't know, 25 locations on the Chugatch border. And so, I see a difference here because of that nature, and that makes it a slightly different element than other portions of the comprehensive plan I am familiar with. And so, in answer to Commissioner Robinson's question, where you're, you're not impacting everybody, you're only impacting those people adjacent to or near or contiguous to these access points. And that's what, the people that are going to be impacted by parking, more people passing through their property, and issues along that nature. And that's how I think it's critical for us to notify those people.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, I mean, Ms. McConnell, I have one other question to ask you, which is, having read the responsibilities and authority of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it would appear to me, at least in my comprehension, that although requesting the notification to a property owner is maybe precedent-setting, it is within the powers of the Planning and Zoning Commission to make such a request.
I would agree with that. And I, like Ms. Wong, I believe, have some information that may be helpful.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Wong?
In looking at this Chugatch Access Plan, I treat it as sort of in the realm of being a functional plan. So, similar to this was, is the Anchorage Wetlands Management Plan.
Correct.
That is also a functional plan that touched on those properties only that had wetlands. And we did send out a notice to all those property owners that had a wetland on their property. So, we could certainly look at this in the same light.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to hear that about the Wetlands Management Plan, because I put these two plans of equal importance, second only to the Title 21 rewrite plan. So, thank you for that additional information. So, as I understand it, Madam Chair, Secretary, we have a motion before the Commission to reopen the public hearing and to request that all of the affected property owners be formally contacted with a written letter. And as it has been explained, it is within the power of the Planning and Zoning Commission to make such a request. Then, there was an amendment asked, which was to include all property owners within 1,000 feet. Is that correct? And to have a more detailed map for our understanding. Is there any objection to the motion? The motion to amend, to include the notification within 1,000 feet, all property owners, and to have a more specific and detailed map. Seeing and hearing none, that motion to amend is approved. Now, we're now back to Ms. Wong.
I'd like some clarification on the map in terms of details. I think that the state staff has produced a set of maps, example maps, of what they thought would help provide clarity. We want to show the Commission that and get your feedback if that is sufficient, or just to get some feedback so they know which direction to head with those maps.
I haven't seen those maps yet, but I would expect streets, street and property and legal description, property owner and legal description to be clearly identified, and if there are specific sites that have been designated, it would be appropriate, I think, to include the plat for that property.
We'll see what they can do.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Ferguson?
My comment on the maps is I was having trouble interpreting contour lines and roads. In quite a few areas, the roads appeared to run into the contour lines, and that is where my issue came from. Because I was trying to determine where these points are. I was trying to picture my mind or have the ability to drive there and look at that to see what we were doing. And a bunch of them, you cannot determine between a road and a contour line. And that was my objection. Sending us the same maps twice didn't really help to solve the problem. I mean, we had the samples of map, we had the two maps that you sent to us last week again, and we want to know where these are. We want to know where they are in the neighborhood. And that is my point.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I would only say that, you know, one of the difficulties in reading the maps is simply that often the points are way beyond what is currently plotted. And so there is no plotted road beyond which, you know, which is demonstrated on the map. And so, you know, for example, I'm looking at Upper Potter Valley, and I recall that we had quite a bit of testimony of people that were quite familiar with those, with that particular area. And in fact, the map shows through dotted lines, it shows if not actual trails, it shows traditional trails of some kind. And so I would argue that, first of all, you can't get close to where a lot of these points are. You can get within the end of a subdivision and look off to the mountains and see something, and that might be all, you know, all you get. And I think when you look at these maps in conjunction with the table and kind of read, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, similar to what we had with people in Stuckagain, kind of walk through all of those different points, I actually think it's pretty good given what we have in front of us, which is short of, you know, transposing aerial imagery and additional stuff, there's only so much I think they can do. So I just wanted to weigh in. I appreciate Commissioner's concerns for understanding where these points are, and I respect that. But I want to just point out that, you know, I'm familiar with these areas, in part because I hike these areas, but not because I can, you know, get there easily.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that. That's good feedback for all around. Ms. Wong, so I know you and the Department of Natural Resources will do the best that you can to provide some new maps. Thank you. We're now back to our main motion, which has been made by Commissioner Parks and seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you very much. We're moving on now to the regular agenda, resolutions for approval. And I am understanding that both of these will be postponed. And both resolutions for approval under F-1A 2012-028 and Resolution 2012-047 will be, are postponed until the next available meeting due to a short port. We are, ah, but we do need a motion to postpone, so may I have that, please? Ms. Dean?
I move to postpone 2012-028 and 2012-047 to a date to be determined.
All right, and that's seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. We are now moving on to, under the regular agenda, Case 2013-008, Amendment to an Approved Site Plan Review for a Large Retail Establishment, Mountain View Development Subdivision, Tracts 1 and 1A. These are frag lots. This is not a public hearing. May we have staff comments, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is a non-public hearing review for an amendment to an approved site plan for conditional use for a large retail establishment to allow Bass Pro Shops store to be located at the Glen Square Shopping Center. This Glen Square is zoned B3, general business district. As you mentioned, it is fragment lots development, and this petition site includes fragment lots 2, 4, and 13A within Tract 1A, Mountain View Development Subdivision, located at the northeast corner of Mountain View Drive and the Glen Highway. Fragment Lot 2 is the location of the, will be the location of the Bass Pro Shop. Fragment Lot 13A contains the common parking area that serves the entire Glen Square Shopping Mall. And Fragment Lot 4 is proposed to be eliminated. Originally was identified on the plan to be developed as a restaurant, but it will now be eliminated. It will be incorporated into Fragment Lot 13A, which is the common parking area, and it will be developed for parking. The Bass Pro Shop is proposing to locate and occupy the entire 58,000-plus square foot building located on Fragment Lot 2, and they will be proposing to expand the footprint to about 81,000 square feet to provide additional retail and warehouse space. The Glen Square site plan originally was approved on December 5, 2005, for a large retail establishment, and the commercial Fragment Lot site plan for Fragment Lots 1 through 14 within Tract 8 was approved during the same meeting. Fragment Lot site plan does contain 31 acres, so the acreage of the entire Glen Square Mall is approximately 31 acres. Now, the development on Fragment Lot 2 will be accomplished in two phases. Phase 1 is going to repurpose that existing, the existing building on Fragment Lot 2 with tenant improvements, and they're going to create one facility. They plan to occupy the entire facility. They intend to expand the front curb line to create an entrance plaza and a port cochere and change the exterior envelope. That they proposed open by June 1 of this year. Phase 2 will include the addition of new warehouse space to the rear of the building and construction of a new addition to the north and to accommodate a new restaurant. New parking and landscaping will be added to the area currently designated as Fragment Lot 4, and that is proposed to be opened by October 1 of this year. There are two vehicular access driveways to the Glen Square from Mountain View Drive. The site plan previously had two access points to the parking area at the front of this Fragment Lot 2. But however, the westernmost driveway to the site will be closed. Now, removal of this westernmost driveway to the parking area that serves Fragment Lot 2 will change the traffic patterns because the easternmost driveway now will be the only driveway access and the most direct route to the parking area that will serve the Bass Pro Shops. And it will change the traffic patterns, especially for service and delivery vehicles. Also, fire plan review requires the applicant to provide a fire access that meets the requirements of the International Fire Code. A traffic impact analysis was done in 2005. It was approved. It was based on the full occupancy of the proposed 242,800-plus square feet of commercial and office space. There was an update to the 2005 TIA that was submitted when a 2,100-seat cinema was proposed. The results of that TIA found that the trip generation remained consistent with the findings of the previously approved TIA. There was an update to the TIA submitted for this most recent amendment, and that TIA basically found that the effects to downstream intersections are expected to be minor. In terms of a site grading and drainage plan was approved with the original development. However, private development will require an update to the plan with the building permit for the new construction and the reconstruction of the parking lot. There is no residentially zoned property adjoining this petition site, and outdoor storage is not shown as being planned on the site plan. There is a new trash collections area that is proposed on the northern side of the building. There is a driveway to this dumpster and is shown to be accessed from the south entrance Accessing a dumpster from the south entrance road could have an adverse effect on the traffic that is entering the shopping center from Mountain View Drive. And traffic engineering comments state that the applicant should consider relocating that proposed trash and refuse housing away from the primary access route to the Glen Square Mall. And they do suggest providing a design that provides service circulation patterns that do not interfere with automobile, pedestrian, and parking movement. The entryway into the store is extensive, resulting in the loss of some existing parking stalls. Additional parking spaces will be gained with the elimination of Fragment Lot 4, which will now be dedicated to parking. But there will be a net loss of 59 parking spaces, yielding a total 888 spaces, of which 25 are excess parking spaces. So the required parking for the Glen Square Mall continues to be met and exceeded, and the same number of accessible parking spaces are being provided with the reconfigured parking lot that were provided, that are being provided now before the reconfiguration of the parking area that is serving Fragment Lot 2. Pedestrian amenities were constructed along the main driveway entrances to the shopping center, both the north and the south entrance, main entrance roads. There's also a bus stop at the, adjacent to the parking area along the south entrance road with a sidewalk that leads to the parking area as well as to the new use that will be on Fragment Lot 2. The redesign of Fragment Lot 2 will include a sidewalk along the entire front of the Bass Pro Shop that will be landscaped with native vegetation to provide buffer between the parking lot and the sidewalk. The enlarged landscape entry will provide several features that offer a public gathering area, including a trapper's cabin, a fire pit, a dry creek bed, and a fly casting pond. The intent is to reflect the Anchorage and the surrounding area of Anchorage and the heritage of Anchorage. And that was one of the major intents and has been the major intent of the Bass Pro Shops in every area that they do locate, is to reflect the location within which they are locating. And they have been working with the Alaska Heritage to work out what would be some of the design details that would make this a truly Alaskan Bass Pro outpost store. The signage does exceed, review of the signage plan shows that the front face or the east, the north face does exceed that which is allowed by AMC 2147. The last conversation with the representative of the petitioners, I was informed that the applicant does propose to conform with the requirements of the sign code. There is a condition 9 that does offer an either-or, either conform to the sign code or obtain a variance from the Urban Design Commission for any signage that does exceed the allowable signage that is allowed by the sign code. There was a painted roof sign that was proposed on two of the elevations. Painted roof signs are not allowed by the sign code. So with that removal of those painted Bass Pro in red roof signs, the other three elevations, their signage does conform with the 2147, the sign code. The lighting plan also was approved in 2005. Traffic engineering will be requiring an update to the lighting plan based on the reconfiguration of the parking area and the new lighting for the Bass Pro Shops. The design of the Bass Pro Shops store reflects the outdoor experience of hunting and fishing. It is rustic in nature. It does reflect a hunting lodge, and it differs from the theme throughout the rest of the center, which is generally red brick with white stucco accents. However, it is also somewhat isolated in its own location from the rest of the mall, and it seems to fit especially with the Alaskan accents that are being provided with the development of this store. The elevation of the store will be similar to the rest of the buildings in the Glen Square Mall. However, the facade will have varying elevations, pitched roof entryways, and towers that will lend interest to the structure, and there will not be a flat roof line. The front east-facing side of the building is broken up with projections, roof overhangs, windows, and towers. The front door to the facility will convert a sidewalk into a native landscape. There's a new 50-foot zone that contains large amounts of, will contain large amounts of native grasses, large spruce trees, gigantic local boulders, a few spring-blooming trees, and a small casting pond pool for summer months. The intent of these features, again, is to reflect an original environment native to Anchorage and its surrounding region. The predominant color scheme is brown and green. The design features include native bark on half-logged siding, ground berms, native rock boulders, and roof surfaces will be a green shingle. The pitched roofs and the towers will effectively conceal mechanical equipment on the roof. The Bass Pro Shops have been award-winning designs in other localities. They are located throughout the Midwest, the East Coast, the Southwest, and Canada, and they have been award-winning designs in localities, in some of the localities in which they are situated. The department does recommend approval of an amendment to an approved site plan for a large retail establishment for a Bass Pro Shop store to be located in the Glen Square Shopping Center, subject to conditions 1 through 9 on pages 17 through 19 of the packet, with one minor amendment to condition 5. And that is basically, traffic engineering had a number of concerns that will be looked at during the building permit process. The first sentence of condition 5 states, "Resolved the following with traffic engineering." It goes on to state, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit." Staff would like to eliminate "prior to the issuance of a building permit" because the plans are being submitted and they're under review now, and the Bass Pro Shops has a very tight timeline to meet their June opening date, and they would like to have the conditions all being reviewed, approved, and resolved in order to get that building permit issued. So that, just eliminating that one phrase, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit" on page 18 of condition 5 is the recommendation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Shall I proceed with the Fragment Lot site plan, the plat, together? Typically, these are held together?
Right. Yes, please. Briefly.
Briefly.
Thank you.
Well, it's a big project. But anyways, the Fragment Lot site plan also has to be amended. The amendments to the Fragment Lot site plan
The amendments to the Fragment Lot Site Plan include the building footprint on proposed Fragment Lot 2A will increase to 81,000 square feet. The size of proposed Fragment Lot 2A will increase to 0, 6.658 acres, will increase to 5.139 acres. Proposed Fragment Lot 4 will be eliminated. Proposed Fragment Lot 13B will be increased, will be decreased to 10.195 acres. They're losing about a third of an acre. And the preliminary plat does need to be amended. It does only include the, the preliminary plat for the Fragment Lot only includes the three lots that are being amended by this site plan. However, Fragment Lot Site Plan has to show all the lots because it is a site plan. It has to show all the lots within the Fragment Lot Site Plan. And that is addressed in a condition on the site plan, but the, on the, condition on the, let's see, condition 2 on page 8. The department does recommend approval of the site plan, subject to its middle of the final landscape plan, and also approval of the plat for 18 months, subject to conditions 1 through 6 on pages 8 through 10 of the packet. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Questions from commissioners. Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for staff. This is, this item is not a public hearing, and I understand it's not a public hearing because it's an amendment to an existing approved, approved ordinance for a large retail establishment. Yet I wonder if there's any threshold under which a public hearing is actually designated, given that we're looking at a whole new building? And is that not the intent of the large retail establishment is to have public input on that? Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Robinson, basically, this was an amendment to an existing building and it is a similar use. It is commercial in nature. It was an enlargement of an existing building. It was deemed to be considered not requiring a public hearing. It was considered to be minor in nature. The addition of a cinema was also, I believe, let's see, I have the history here. The, the, in 2008, the commission did approve an amendment to a site plan for construction of a new cinema, and that too was a non-public hearing amendment to an approved site plan.
So, if I may, so as long as you get approved the first time around, no matter what size or what you propose coming in for an amendment doesn't require, you're through the public hearing process?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson. It's not necessarily always the case. A cinema, a new cinema was, was a larger addition than this was considered a minor addition because it wasn't adding that much square footage. It wasn't amending, it wasn't reducing the parking beyond what was required by code. It was not changing the use of the structure and therefore it was considered a minor amendment. Every, every case is looked at individually and if it's not a revamping of the entire mall or changing uses or, then I, every case is decided on its own merits. So I can't say that one, it's one public hearing and it, there's never a public hearing again. One was considered minor.
What I can say, and correct me if I'm wrong, Erica, but that the commission always has the right to request a public hearing if we feel that there is enough, that there have been enough public comments one way or another. I think that's, but we'll go on. Erica, while you're looking that up, we'll go on to Commissioner Spring and then Commissioner Ferguson.
Staff, I have two questions. The staff report, and you mentioned that there's a problem with the service bay or access off of South Entrance Road and that it would interfere with traffic, et cetera. And can you clarify what that service access is? I'm assuming that it's some type of garbage pickup or something? And it appears that the, there's some room for the maneuvering of a service vehicle, a garbage truck, in and out of that area to do garbage pickup, to get out of the flow of traffic. Looks like the only real interference with traffic would be as the service vehicles back in up or into that service bay. And I don't, guess I understand what the problem is with that.
Through the chair, it's not a very long driveway. It's to a dumpster. The dumpster is going to be gated and the maneuvering of, the maneuvering of the pickup and backing out would interfere with possible access. It's a major access road to the Glen Square Mall and it would, could possibly interfere depending on the number of garbage pickups and the, the timing of them. And traffic engineering is opposed to it as well, in their comments.
Second question involves the comment regarding the change in circulation as a result of the reconfiguration of the parking lot. And I wasn't able to, I've been out there several times. I live in the area. And I believe there's two north-south aisles through the parking lot on the east side of the existing facility, the existing storefront, right? So your, the site plan seems to be eliminating one of those aisles and what appears to be, the change in circulation appears to be perhaps pretty minor, just moving the, the circulation from one aisle to the easternmost aisle and then coming around to the back of the area. And I don't understand why that would be more of a hindrance to circulation than the existing circulation pattern that is set by the existing parking lot exactly.
Well, it eliminates one of the options for delivery. It brings the delivery vehicles further into the Glen Square Mall. And then they have to circulate within the parking area and then there's a longer drive to the rear of the building. It also is, is a delay for fire access.
To the rear of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Because fire access needs a fire access route that goes around the building, to the rear of the building if they need to. And it has to be with no more than 150 feet from the closest hydrant. They, they, their hoses are only 150 feet long.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what, what the circulation, change in circulation has to do with the location of the hydrant.
It makes a longer route for fire access vehicles to get to the rear of the building in the event of a fire. Because now they have to travel further on the south entrance road, go further past the parking area, go to the, turn east, and then turn south again to get to the rear of the building. So that's a longer route for fire trucks and/or ambulances. And there's always a fire truck that accompanies an ambulance in the event of an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm just having a little trouble understanding, this was, application was applied for December 13th, less than two months ago, correct? It looks like it from the application. I think they've supplied a great deal of information to us. I think they are being asked to do a fair amount. It wasn't very long ago that we looked at a fairly large expansion of Walmart and it seems to me that they had to do far less. And I'm just a little sad that we're doing this to a company that wants to come in, do a major remodel, and go into an existing facility that was designed for the size of place. And we don't even request a TIA of Walmart with a major expansion. It's just, it's just frustrating and I'm just voicing my frustration that, you know, it seems so unfair to some people and not everybody.
Madam Chair? Ms. Dean? The Walmart, are you talking about the one on DeBar?
I was referring to the Walmart on C and Benson.
Well, they may have been, I don't know if that was permitted outright. All I know is that the TIA was submitted with the application. And it was just simply an update to the TIA. The change to the parking area was a direct result of the proposed development of this site and the improvement of the, the building was all based on the design that the applicant wishes to create for their new store.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, that I believe the Bass Pro Shop has supplied us with a great deal of information and I just wish we had requested more of Walmart in their expansion.
I see.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't see any other commissioners in the queue, but I believe the commission has the right to ask the petitioner's representative in a non-public hearing to respond to questions that have been raised by the commission. So is there a petitioner's representative here? Would you clearly state your name for the record and if you could direct your comments to some of the issues that have been raised specifically by the commissioners?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Wendy Wilber with CRW Engineering, and I am here representing Bass Pro. And I do have a Bass Pro representative with me, Tom Jowett, flew up to be here for this hearing and share their commitment to move this forward. I did really want to clarify a few things. There is no change to delivery access to this site. Delivery access remains in the back of the store. There is a dumpster that is accessed from the main entry road. We have agreed to move that to the back of the store. That is not a problem. So that will be removed. But there are very, very minor changes to the parking lot. Really, it's just the addition of that landscaped entry and the conversion of Frag Lot where there was a restaurant to parking. One reason that that first entrance was closed is if you've ever driven down into Glen Square, it's actually on a slope and there's a stop sign at the bottom of it. There's a very little queuing area behind it and it's slick in the winter. We did that for safety. We did it for pedestrian safety so that we can enhance the plaza, extend the sidewalk. And there are still two entrances into Frag Lot 13. There are still two there. Fire access remains the same. The fire department has reviewed it. We are actually adding a hydrant to address some of those issues. So very minor change. And also, in, in terms of the question of the public hearing, I want to be very clear that the original site plan actually approved 83,000 square feet of commercial retail space at this location. That was approved in the original plan. We are proposing 81,000 square feet. This is really a very minor amendment. And Bass Pro has exceeded Title 21 with our landscape plazas. They have exceeded just about everything we could hope for, quite frankly. It is very unique. They are definitely working with a native heritage center. And you will see a beautiful native entryway with carved totem poles. They've commissioned an artist to do a totem pole. And we are actually being asked to submit a full landscaping plan of that plaza in one of the conditions. I believe it is condition seven, so that the planning department has an opportunity to review the totem pole and that level. My understanding is there is an approved landscaping plan for this development and there's nothing in Title 21 that requires the plaza landscaping plan to be developed, to be submitted separately for another review. And so we would ask consideration of condition six, or, I'm sorry, it's condition seven.
Thank you very much. If you will stay at the podium, we do have commissioners with questions. Commissioner Ferguson first.
Okay. Are you aware of the department recommendations on page 17 through 19 of your packet?
Yes.
The staff has already indicated that they would agree to the deletion on number five to the phrases prior to the issuance of a building permit. And with, and you just indicated that you had some objection to condition seven.
Yes. We could live with condition seven, but we would certainly like that reconsidered.
Okay. Are there any other conditions you would like to suggest for reconsideration?
No, we have no other conditions to reconsider.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I guess I'm still confused about the, what the original site circulation is. I'm, was, is the removal of the westernmost access in front of the existing stores or in back?
It's in front.
Is it directly in front?
Yes. So you would come down, you would come down the road and you'd make a right turn right into Bass Pro.
Oh, well, yeah, I think I would have an objection to putting truck traffic right between the storefront and the parking lot.
And that is correct.
It seems like that would be more of a conflict.
The delivery access has, has always used one of the other driveways to circle around to the back of the building. They did not come across the front and that would be in direct conflict with the pedestrian nature of Bass Pro.
I think it's an improvement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to commend the petitioner for the application and the, the responses to this ordinance. When I have a comment though on, on the, whether there should be a public hearing or not, it really is not directed at, at you all as a petitioner. In my opinion, if there's nothing that the public wishes to comment on, then there's no harm in offering the, the public hearing and moving on and, and you don't lose any time from, from your process. I simply say, as I read through the list of requirements by which you have to adhere to, there are more than, more of them than there are not, I think, that are affected by the design. Now, in my opinion, I think you've, you've complied and exceeded with them. That's not the issue. The issue is whether or not I think, I feel like just because you've done a good job, we don't need to notify the, you know, the public doesn't need an opportunity. I mean, furthermore, I, I, you know, it amazes me that we potentially build a, a whole new theater and it doesn't have to comply with the big box ordinance either. So I, I think, again, to you all, I, I think, congratulations, you've done a good job. I like the site. But I do think staff needs to reconsider when, when a public hearing is, is potentially, if this were in a different location, I would argue, it would almost certainly have, have demanded a, a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. I see no other commissioners in the queue. What is the wish of the commission at this time? May I have a motion, please? A motion to approve. Commissioner Robinson?
Madam Secretary, one, one at a time or would you like them both together?
I believe, under these circumstances, we can do them, we can't. We'd like to, but we can't. We need them separately. Thank you.
And one clarification. And one clarification, the second case is regarding the plat will require two motions. The first case will only require one. If you look at the S-11965-1, you need approval of the site plan, and then you need approval of the plat for eighteen months. It doesn't say that.
Well, I'll start with the other one, then.
Okay.
In the matter of case 2013-008, an amendment to an approved site plan review for a large retail establishment, I move that we approve this request with staff recommendations, including staff deletion of wording under item five prior to the issuance of a building permit.
And that motion is seconded by Ms. Dean. Commissioner Spring.
Clarification, I was thinking about an amendment while you were making the motion. Is it, we're on the Frag Lots at this time, or the site plan?
Site plan.
Okay. I would make an amendment to delete the wording under condition five F, which states that provide a design which prevents service circulation patterns from interfering with automobile, pedestrian, and parking movement.
That's in the form of a motion. That's been motioned by Commissioner Spring and seconded by Commissioner Robinson. Is there any objection to the motion, to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, that amendment is approved.
Clarification?
Yes.
I have a mover. Was there a second to that motion?
There was. Commissioner Robinson.
Okay. Let me just second.
Commissioner Ferguson.
If that motion's carried, or amendment's carried, I'd like to make another amendment.
All right.
I'd like to make an amendment to Mr. Robinson's motion that we delete the requirements under paragraph seven on page nineteen.
Thank you. That would be a second amendment before we vote on the main motion. Okay? May I have a second? That is a motion by Commissioner Ferguson to delete item number seven, and it's seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there objection to that motion? Seeing and hearing none, that amendment to the motion has been approved. Ms. O'Brien, did you have a comment?
Madam Chair, I am, about Mr. Spring's deletion, I don't, I was wondering which case he was reading from. The 2013-008, five F reads, "Service and delivery access to the south entrance road will result in efficiency and safety problems. Maneuvering, service, and delivery trucks will periodically block access to business and parking areas. Consider relocating the proposed trash and refuse housing away from the primary." Is access, my understanding was you wanted to eliminate five F?
Madam Chair, staff, no, my amendment was to only eliminate the last sentence of that paragraph.
Oh, provide a design which prevents, just the, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Spring.
All right, was that the understanding of the second and the other commissioners? All right, thank you very much. Are there any other amendments before we vote on the main motion? All right, may I have a motion to approve case 2013-008? It's a main motion. I'm sorry, it is on the table. It has been moved by?
Robinson.
All right, Tyler Robinson and Commissioner Dean, my apologies. Is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Commissioner Robinson, did you want to move on to case S-11965-1?
I would. I would like to know if the secretary would like some findings on that. Can I simply state that I believe that the petitioner has done due diligence in applying with 2115-030 for the site plan and conditional use, as well as 2150-320, public hearing site plan review for large retail establishments, including in many instances exceeding the standards in the code. The application is also consistent with comprehensive plan, Anchorage 2020 policies, 2143 and 49.
Thank you very much for those findings. Now we can move on. S-11965-1, may I have a motion? Commissioner Robinson.
In the matter of case S-11965-1, Mountain View Development Subdivision, tract 1A, Fragment Lots 2, 4, and 13A, an amendment to that fragment lot, I move to approve with staff, staff recommendations as listed.
Thank you very much. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Parks.
Point of clarification, please. The first motion is approval of the site plan, and there are no conditions, and the second motion would be approval of the plat with conditions.
Well, we've already approved the site plan.
Yes, we have approved the site plan.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's a commercial fragment lot site plan which is different from the large retail establishment site plan. So this case, you need, as the secretary stated, if you look on page eight, there's two department recommendations. One is the approval, and this is the commercial fragment lot site plan, and then the second thing is approving the plat. It's a confusing portion of code.
Thank you. Commissioner Spring, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have an amendment for Mr. Robinson's.
If I, Madam, Madam.
Which one?
Madam Chair, may I clarify the motion, then?
Yes, please do.
Okay. In the matter of case S-11965-1, Mountain View Development Subdivision, I move to approve the site plan, as well as the plat, subject to staff recommendations as listed.
It needs to be a separate motion, each one. Give it one more try, because after this, we're going to take a break.
Thank you. In the matter of case S-11965-1, move to approve the site plan, subject to submittal of final landscape plan. Actually, I move to approve the site plan, period.
All right, but?
I'm sorry, it is subject to submittal of the final.
Yeah, and since we deleted it in the previous, whatever we did, I don't think we want it.
Okay.
All right, all right. Thank you very much. This has been moved by Commissioner Robinson. It's been seconded by Commissioner Parks. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Now we need one more, then we can go on break.
Thank you. In the matter of case S-11965-1, Mountain View Development Subdivision, I move to approve the plat for eighteen months, subject to staff recommendations as listed.
All right, thank you very much. And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Now we have people in the queue. Commissioner Spring, and then Ms. O'Brien.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion similar to the one I made for the site plan approval for this platting action on, with respect to condition B, B two, excuse me, B five F, I would recommend or move to delete the last sentence of that paragraph, which states, "Provide a design which prevents service circulation patterns from interfering with automobile, pedestrian, and parking movement."
Thank you very much. May I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there any objection to the amendment to the main motion? Seeing and hearing none, that amendment is approved. Thank you, Commissioner Spring. Are there any other amendments prior to the main motion? Seeing and hearing none, we're back to the main motion, which was made by, or have we, we haven't, do we have a?
It was moved by Commissioner Ferguson and seconded, I mean, moved by Commissioner Robinson and seconded by Commissioner Ferguson.
All right, thank you. Are there any objections to the main motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you, and may we have some findings of fact? Commissioner Robinson, did you have some findings?
I simply, I believe that the fragment lot and the plat and the site plan adhere to the requirements of subdivision code.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing this new development in Glen Square and the commitment of the petitioner for continued economic activity in this community. We are now going to take a ten-minute break. Thank you. This is Planning and Zoning Commission appeal of an administrative decision. Just for those of you that might be a little new on the commission, we heard this case once before regarding a cell tower, and there was an appeal by the petitioner's representative of the director's decision, which the Planning and Zoning Commission previously upheld. And now, the new decision by the director to allow a shorter cell tower has been appealed. So we are again in an appeal situation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a public hearing, and so the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all his/her representatives, ten minutes. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, if you are a representative of group, please identify yourself clearly and what your position is within the group, and if you have the authority to speak for the group. Individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within twenty days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. May we please have the staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission and the community. My name is Dylan English, and I am presenting case 2013-004. First, I apologize to the commission. This is a large packet, and I did not provide a table of contents for the packet. I placed a table of contents on the table tonight for the commission. I will provide an overview of the packet after I provide an explanation of notice. You'll see a lot of duplicates in the packet. It's only because I did not want to remove items that were submitted by each petitioner as a packet. In addition, there's some extra items that were handed to you last week. That's because we wanted to keep their packets intact. They gave separate packets for the commission. One hundred and eight public notices were mailed to the property owners within five hundred feet of the Rogers Park Community Council, oh, sorry, of the petition site. Twenty-four community members responded in support of granting this appeal, and one community member responded against the appeal. Community comments for case 2013-004 start on page two thirty-one of the packet. The Rogers Park Community Council submitted two resolutions passed in May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. The resolutions start on page two forty-four of the packet. In addition, they submitted minutes, minutes to, for their October meeting. This is an appeal by the community of a decision made under case 2012-131 by the Community Development Department Director to approve a sixty-six-foot-tall tower in the vicinity of 2100 East Northern Lights. The property is owned B1A Local and Neighborhood Business District. The site is south of Northern Lights, west of Lake Otis, and east of Columbia Street. A copy of the zoning map is located on page eleven of the packet and shows the location of the property. In addition, there's an aerial photo on page forty of the packet. A copy of the case the community is appealing starts on page two fifty-seven of the packet. The tower review checklist starts on page two sixty-three. There you'll find the conditions, what we reviewed, and how we addressed each condition. The application starts on page two seventy-one, which was the petitioner's application for case 2012-131. And the site plan is located on page two eighty-nine of the packet. I do want to mention that after the appeal and in response to some current concerns about access, the petitioner submitted an alternate site plan located on page one seventy-seven of the packet. Tonight, I talked to the petitioner, and they wished the commission to consider the alternate site plan. Originally, Atlas Towers applied for a hundred-foot monopole tower for the location under case 2012-060. The director denied the request, and Atlas appealed the case to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was heard under case 2012-088. The commission denied the appeal and upheld the director's decision under resolution 2012-037. I do have a copy of the resolution. Atlas revised the plan, changed the location of the tower, and decreased the height of the tower to sixty-six feet. They submitted a new application for a site plan. The department reviewed the plan in accordance with AMC 2145-265, the tower ordinance, AMC 2150-200, and AMC 2150-280, which is conditional use standards. Even though this is not a conditional use, the site plan is subject to those areas of the code. This is a new case. The petitioner's appeal raises concerns about the ingress and egress on the site. If you look at the original plan under case 2012-131, they do block off the alley access. However, there was an access agreement between the neighboring lot and the medical park building, and therefore, we considered it to be okay because they had, they did have an access and parking agreement in place. The petitioner, let's see, the parking agreement for the lot is shown on page two ninety-eight of the packet. After approval of the plan and submittal of the appeal by the, I already went through, I'm sorry, that. The petitioner is concerned about the tower height and requirement for the tower to be located two-hundred percent of the allowable height, tower height from a house located on a residentially-zoned lot. Towers in the B1A zoning district are permitted to be one-hundred-and-thirty feet in height and can add up to thirty feet for co-location. The tower is proposed to be sixty-six feet in height. Based on the survey located on page three eighteen of the packet, the tower will be one-hundred-and-thirty-two feet from the nearest home. The department placed a condition of approval on the site plan that does not allow the tower to increase in height. Therefore, it will maintain its two-hundred percent of the, of the tower, proposed tower height. Therefore, the tower is limited to sixty-six feet in height for this location. The decision of the administrative official is final unless it is appealed within fifteen days, and it has to be appealed either by the petitioner, which was Atlas Towers, or one-third of the property owners within five hundred feet excluding right-ofways of the petition site. Forty-four percent of the property owners within the petition site signed a petition, and the petition was timely filed within fifteen days. The review of the appeal, the commission, in review of the appeal, the commission shall apply the standards of AMC 2145-265, 2150-200, and 2150-280C. There are two site plans in this decision, the original site plan being appealed and the alternate site plan submitted by Atlas. The department supports both site plans. Traffic engineering commented on both and did not have objection to either one of them. The department recommends that the commission deny the appeal and uphold the department's decision, subject to the conditions of approval located, approval located on seven and eight of the packet for the original site plan. If the commission rejects the first site plan and approves the alternate site plan, then the department recommends adding two more conditions. We want to ensure that the, we don't believe they moved the tower location, but we want to ensure that it is, in fact, still going to be 100, at least 132 feet away from the neighboring houses. So, we'd like them to submit a survey. In addition, uh, the parking will become tighter on this site. So, right now, there is parking within, uh, snow stored within required parking. So, if the commission were to approve the site plan, remove, they require that they remove the snow from the site within 72 hours. I have no other comments at this time.
Thank you very much. If I understand correctly, even though there's one individual's name as the petitioner, this is a community, uh, uh, appeal?
Yes, the petitioner came forward as their representative, but their, you know, 1/3 of the property owners did sign the petition.
All right. Thank you very much. So, um, uh, my question then is procedural. I understand the length of time the petitioner's representatives will have, but is this group, would this group then fall under the five-minute rule or the three-minute rule? Is there, it mean, is it a formal group? How do I determine what should be five minutes and what should be three minutes?
Madam Chair, um, the petitioner should have the 10 minutes.
Right.
Um, any community council representative that's representing the community council will have five minutes.
Right.
And then, any community members that wish to get up and testify will have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. So, there is no other group?
Not the land square.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dean and then Commissioner Ferguson.
Through the chair. My question of staff is, I'm a little confused. There's two different potential site plans. Do I understand that correctly?
Madam Chair, Ms. Dean? Yes, the petitioner originally submitted the site plan located on page 289 of the packet. That is the site plan that we reviewed under, under, uh, under the, under the case. After the concern over access, uh, the petitioner during the appeal process has submitted an alternate site plan that, that allows for access onto the alleyway instead of blocking the alleyway. And the alternate site plan is located on page 177 of the packet.
Are we being asked to choose between the two?
In this case, the, the Atlas Towers prefers the, the site plan on page 177 after listening to some of the concerns of the community. So, the commission can decide to substitute the new site plan, the, the alternate site plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I am also confused, but I'm confused in a slightly different manner. The commission tonight has the option to affirm the director's decision. We have the option to, um, overrule the director's decision. Do we all have the option to affirm with additional comments? Or do we only have two options?
The commission can uphold or uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. They can, you can also add conditions to the site. You can substitute the alternate site plan also.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
A point of clarification on the conditions on page eight. Maybe I'm mistaken, I don't know. Uh, condition number seven, it says revised landscape plans that showed required 10-foot buffer landscaping along the north property line adjacent to the alley. Isn't that the south property line?
Madam Chair, Mr. Spring, you are correct. If we can revise that condition.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Robinson?
I just, when you were presenting, you were talking about snow storage requirements. Is that, is that a, a condition that would be applied in a certain circumstance or where would I see that?
It was not one of the requirements of the site, the 2145-265. However, as the parking area shrinks, they're, they're going to begin storing their snow within the required parking, parking area, required parking spots. So, we would like to add a condition about removing the snow within 72 hours.
So, just to clarify, you are, you're asking the commission to add that condition?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other commissioners in the queue with questions from staffs. May we hear from the petitioner's representative, please? You have 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jeanne Ostness, J-E-A-N-N-E-O-S-T-N-E-S. And, um, the red packet that you have received separately from the 300-page packet, which this is included in the 300 pages, um, the, um, red packet though, is basically the rebuttal that we put in as a final. I guess I understand that nothing's final though. And if you would turn to, uh, the attachment five, um, it shows very well the, um, height of the single tower in, uh, three parking lots. If you turn to the next page of the attachment five, you see an overview of the area. The building that has the rounded back end is the medical building and the, uh, blank parking spot next to it is where they want to put the tower. The next two parking lots belong to, um, the Don Jose Restaurant and the third is Don Jose's Restaurant. The, um, number of people who have been involved in this throughout the couple of years here, last year and this year, um, has been numerous. Some signed the first ones, some signed the last. I do have a, um, another petitioner who owns the building just past, um, Don Jose's Restaurant, so that would be Lot 10. Uh, it's quite close to Don Jose's, Mr. Sanders. And I'll pass this to you to pass around. He also is against the tower's location. And in regards to the snow, I'll also give you this. This show, this shows the back three, uh, three or four parking spaces covered with snow and of the 23 spots that this building supposedly is supposed to have, those pictures show that really only one, uh, one is there. And, uh, we had a few other comments from the staff indicating, uh, some of the things that we were remiss in. One is the, um, discussion I had with the University of Alaska. And the University of Alaska basically indicated that the statement that I had given to you in the red packet is something that he does concur with and that, uh, they do feel that they could have a cell tower on their property. We, uh, have, uh, basically told you and I'm sure other community members in other parts of the municipality have indicated, one, they just don't want the tower there, but two, if it does go in, that there would be some sort of a camouflage over what the municipality is now indicating in landscaping. And if you turn to, uh, the third index there, you can see that many of the cell towers throughout the United States, and we should be included, can be camouflaged enough to the point where they are, um, looking similar to what is in the area. In the university's case, maybe they would have a tower, um, in farmland. They make them into barns, uh, in tree areas. They can turn them into trees. I'd like to stop here at this point and allow the community members to speak and then I will, um, come back later.
Uh, thank you very much. You have 5 minutes and 44 seconds left. I want to say that we've just received at least three additional handouts of information. And the policy of the commission is that we are to receive all information prior to the meeting and as a matter of fact, several days in our packet. So, we are, if you, if you as a community member have additional information that you want to lay on the table, that is simply a duplicate of what information we have already received, I would encourage you not to do that because we're getting dangerously close to having too much information handed to us during the meeting, which will then result in probably a motion for postponement. So, thank you very much. Are there any questions of commission members at this time? All right, thank you. You have 5 minutes and 45 seconds remaining. For those of you that are here to speak to the, from the community, would you, or, uh, community council, would you please come forward? May we have the first, uh, person to give testimony? Please come forward. Is there anyone here who wishes to give testimony?
I'll brave it.
All right. Please clearly state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Scott Davis and I live on Yale within the 200% fall distance of the allowable tower height. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for letting us be here tonight. I wanted to respond mostly to the response to our appeal made by the applicant and let you know that we are not against technology. We're not against growth and development, but more particularly maybe against towers and that type of technology. We believe that there are other options that should be considered and, uh, the one point I'd like to make too is just some of the misrepresentations or possibly spins, if I may say so, um, quote, "Unsupported arguments in an attempt to discredit the approval and to apply procedural burdens on the applicant that are not contained in the Anchorage Municipal Code reliance subjective opinions that bear no relevance to, on the apartment's findings and decisions." Really, as neighbors, we've really tried to collaborate as best we can and everybody has different arguments, but we did bring the attention that the 200% of the allowable was going to encompass a number of homes last year and we appreciate the appeal being denied of the applicant last year. They've also stated here in their appeal, um, that they've, that there's no other technical, technology of, well, I'm blown, there's a document here that I'd like to just kind of reference here. Their only known client right now, which was Verizon, um, they basically concur, this is in your packet there on 154, they concur with the propagation analysis and alternative site analysis in the narrative provided by Tierney with the Atlas Tower. So, there's real no, uh, demonstrative evidence that we need to have this and that there's no other technology that could fulfill, uh, the needs of the community. Um, I'd like to also address the photo on the accuracy. It's item number two in their appeal. Um, originally, you can find this on 305 and 306 of your documents, the colored representation of the, of the tower. First off, the, the tower in the picture is in the wrong spot on either of the two plot plans that's on proposal there. It's, it is way too far, uh, to the north and west of where it actually will go. I've placed, I plotted it out and you'll see the exact location of the tower on, in our appeal on, um, um, sorry. I believe it's 170, well, 177 is that plot plan that I, that was the revised one. I've done some additional analysis there and it's completely, it's wrong. It's just not right that what they're representing and I can present this later on, but just to believe in the truth that the, what they're presenting is not accurate, even though a professional company is standing up behind it, I think that there's still some error. Is that it?
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't see any questions by commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would the next person please come forward?
Thank you. Greg Strick from College Village Subdivision. I'd ask that the commission take a look at the revised site plans that have been presented. First time I'm seeing this new one. And we've condensed a significant amount of parking into a very condensed area in order to meet the code and the intent of the, um, parking requirements. I question whether this is really going to happen or whether it can happen. And if you look at the site plan itself, you'll see the ingress coming in from Northern Lights, comes in and within 25 feet hits the first parking spot. Not enough time to move. They are undue reliant upon the other parking access from a neighboring business to access into their parking area. This, this ingress crosses a bicycle path. It crosses bus lanes, bus stop, and really is not going to be conducive either way to this configuration. So, I'd ask that the commission, please look at the site plans that are presented. Further, I don't believe that the new site plan even takes into consideration the requirements that were placed for the additional landscaping. So, again, we're taking a very small parking area trying to put in a cellphone basin tower that's going to significantly infringe on the parking, of which now they're going to rely upon adjacent parking to meet their parking requirement. The previous speaker spoke to, um, technology. We're not against technology. We're not against cellphone towers. We understand they have to be in place. 20-year-old technology is what these towers are though. Cities across the country and GCI right now has plans and they're working with the municipality in putting new cellphone towers that are connected to streetlights and street poles and, and, and power poles. This is the technology of where things are going, yet we're up there content with 20-year-old technology. Why this isn't part of Title 21 escapes me. So, I just ask that seriously, look, we're not against, it's not, not in my backyard. We've offered to assist, um, the Verizon, the Atlas Tower Group in meeting with the university and meeting with the school district. We asked who they met with at the school district and who they met with, we met with the folks at Wendler Junior High. We queried at the association meeting at the, um, Rogers Park Council. You didn't speak to the school district. They said, no, we spoke to the folks at Wendler Junior High. So, we had folks that were regents that could introduce them to the folks at the university. We had folks that could introduce them to the, um, school district and we had two assembly members that were offering their assistance, yet nothing has ever occurred from this. So, we're not against it. It's not in our back, it's not a situation of not in our backyard. There's plenty of places that cannot be in anybody's backyard. Thank you.
If you would please stay at the podium, um, we do have a question from Commissioner Spring.
Yes, here I am.
You're missing a name tag, by the way.
Your comment on the parking adequacy and I was wondering myself what the, where the dumpster was going to be located for this, um, medical. And I know there's one there now and it looks like it's close to the alley and I don't see it on the site plan, which might have been overlooked, but it does seem like that might be, uh, take out another parking space. So, I don't know if that would be a problem for the parking requirement or not.
I applaud you for looking at that. I think that's a direct, these are the things that need to be looked. I mean, if you'll note, this is a plan that was built out of North Carolina, if I have my glasses correct. These are nine-foot wide parking spaces. They will have to reconfigure the parking spaces significantly smaller than what's in there now. And I note that there's only two handicap spots. This is a medical facility where people are coming in for MRIs. These are people that are being brought in by vans. This is the facility used for that. Two handicap spots? I'm not sure that this parking addresses the issue for this type of facility to meet the code requirements.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward?
I have an answer.
I want to answer his question.
During rebuttal. Thank you. Would the next person please come forward?
Hi, my name is Wendy Davis, and I as well live on Yale Drive, and the garbage will take up two spaces, actually, two parking spaces. I'd like to start off and talk about the tower height. They have their picture on page, I guess we could start with 331. They're showing what this tower, the reason we're against it is because it does not fit into our little community. This area that they're trying to put the tower in is basically one block of businesses backed up to College Village Community. And if you look at that tower there, they originally were proposing that they needed a 100-foot tower in that neighborhood, and unless they got that 100-foot tower, it actually wouldn't work for them in their connection with their other towers. But if you look at that drawing, they are at the base of that tower, and there's also an elevation of that where they have themselves drawn in at 45 feet. Now, if you look at the 45 feet in relation to our poles in the neighborhood, they are 30 feet. And I believe you have information in the packet from MLP that states those poles in our neighborhood are 30 feet. So if you go across that way, they're showing themselves 45 feet beneath our 30-foot pole. So this is askew, and the drawing is incorrect. And the tower, we do have some trees in our neighborhood that are over 40 years, and I'll tell you what, none of them are 66 feet. They are below that, and it will be hovering over the backyards of our entire community. We already stare at the cell tower at Shriners, which is 45 feet. I already stare at that out every window in my house, and from the front, and I don't care to have this in the back as well. I've talked to many real estate agents and appraisers, and the amount of the value that our property will go down is between 1 and 20 percent. Last year, the municipality raised my taxes $1,200 in one year, and I didn't say anything. But due to the fact this cell tower would go in, it would ruin our community. There was a house next door to my house that was for sale for $319, and that house never sold. There's now 14 to 20 people living in it, and four different families, and that's what I have living next to me. So this tower going in, the value in that community and everybody, I believe you have an analysis on all our homes as well, which is over $22 million, and taking 1 to 20 percent away from the city's tax budget would be astronomical. I also...
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't see any questions in the queue. Would the next person please come forward? Would the next person please come forward? I see Mr. Potter coming down the aisle.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter. I reside at 1800 Stanford Drive in Colquitt subdivision. Yes, it is more than 500 feet away from the proposed monopole site, but just because I don't live directly next to it doesn't mean that it won't affect me, and that I won't see it and have to look at it on a daily basis. In fact, probably more than once a day. The onus is on the applicant in this process, and briefly, I just believe that they have not proved up, both on the height, the consideration of the width of the pole, and what the mass is, has not been considered, in my opinion, and the location, and their analysis and justification for the heights composed with the location, I don't think has been fully vetted. From the location standpoint, the analysis that is on page 315 and 316 that shows why they need to be at this location, looks like they'd actually be a little bit better if they could get to the north side of Northern Lights Boulevard, but also, I believe it assumes a tower height of 66 feet. What I believe they should also have to show as part of their analysis is that, what happens if they go to 55 feet, or 60 feet, or 50 feet? Is there really a significant differential in their coverage pickup and what they will be able to cover or overlap? That has not been presented. And I would like to know that so we can make an actual judgment based on the science and reality, as to do they really need a 66-foot pole? I don't believe that they've shown that or proved up on that. As far as the height, that is one of the major considerations, but I'd ask you to really take a look at the height plus the width or the diameter. When I look at the pole in the drawings on page, on drawing C2, that's located on page 183, it shows an elevation drawing, and it's hard to scale off an eight-and-a-half by 11, but to me, it looks like the base of that monopole is about three to four feet wide. That's way bigger than a telephone pole that they have basically said it is like. And I think that represents a mass that has not been considered by the staff and should be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, because that mass will have an impact. Further, that mass will have an impact when you paint it brown. I'd almost rather that if we get to the end of this thing, and I really hope that you deny this and make them come back with more information, I'm pretty sure that you'd make me do that. On a height standpoint, I believe that to have a photographic display that suggests that that's what it looks like, this is a big corporation, they know what they're doing, they've certainly had to do it in another location, rent a lift, rent a crane, get some helium balloons, fly it up 66 feet, take a picture so you can actually scale the tower at that location to that. Not rocket science by any means. In summary...
Thank you, Mr. Potter. I don't see any questions in the queue. Commissioner Robinson, are you going to save him?
Well, I may. I had a question, though. I, you know, you talked about potentially looking at different heights, or proving out whether 66 feet really makes the difference. I guess my question is, so what happens if 55 is still adequate? Is that something that's acceptable to the neighborhood? I mean, I get, you know, asking them to provide the information and that the onus is on them, but you've just suggested that maybe decreasing in height is something to look at, so I'm asking you, what, you know, what then?
Well, anecdotally, and a lot of you up there can associate yourself with my example, the U.S. Corps of Army Engineers for a Corps permit wants you to minimize, avoid, minimize, or mitigate. And in the practice, a lot of people submit something that's 150 to 200 percent what they actually need from a fill standpoint, so they can go into the system and have the Corps of Engineers staff and all the agencies believe that they beat them in a submission, and they end up walking out with something more than what they actually needed. And that's an approach. I haven't seen anything that would make me think anything different is happening here. I would like to see the evidence that says you have to be at 66 feet for line of sight from this area to serve this area, and, you know, they've got a computer model, they can do it real easy. And show us what happens at 55. I mean, if there's a huge differential, then they've got some justification for the heights. And I don't see that. And I think that we as neighbors that have to live next to this thing, when it's three or four feet wide, if that's what it is, painted brown and 66 feet high, I mean, that's a big thing. And before we accept 66 feet, it would be in my interest, everybody else's interest, and I believe their interest, to do the work and show us if it really needs to be that high. And if they can do it at 56 feet and show me, I may come here next time and support it. That's all I'm saying. They haven't shown me, and I don't believe that they've shown you any justification for the 66 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify? Would you please come forward at this time? Anyone else at all? Please come forward.
I'm Shelley Matherne. I live on Sheldon Jackson Street. I want to say, first off, thank you. The last time I was here, y'all did support the community and listen to what I said, and my daughters got to see that. When we left, we were very excited that the whole process worked, we were listened to. When we got this in the mail to come back, it was very disappointing for all of us. I don't agree that any way they present it, I will ever say yes to it. It's right in my backyard, I'm going to say hello to it every morning. I don't want that. If you want it in your backyard, fine, but I do not, and I will never want it, no matter what they say. It's like my five-year-old keep asking, I'm always going to say no. There are other options. When they presented stuff last time, they said it had to be a certain height because of their location. Now it can be lower. Well, if they can change their parameters for what they said they absolutely needed, why can't they change the parameters of where that square footage is? There are other options I wish they would explore. And is it okay if my daughter reads what she wrote? Is that allowed?
Yes, yes, she may, as long as it's no longer than 1 minute and 54 seconds.
Well, I sort of think that the telephone thing is like an ivy, that when you get rid of it, it comes back, and I also think it won't be pretty when I play piano, because it's right next to the window where I'm going to play piano.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We need your name.
Her name?
Her name.
Claire Matherne.
Claire Matherne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. May we have the next person? Please come forward.
Thank you for, thank you, Commissioner, for taking my testimony tonight. I, my name is Jose Ramos, it's J-O-S-E-R-A-M-O-S, and I'm the owner of lot number eight and seven. And I will refuse that I'm not against any technology, like Mr. Davis said. The only thing I can against is just to be in the way that they have the parking lot designed and pointing to my property. I believe we have, I do, we have an agreement, a crossing agreement with our neighbor, but we never specified any locations of where and how to direct their traffic. So I not agree the way that they, you know, they, they put their plan, I mean, the plan, like you see in the plan, in, let me see, in the map 109, the way that they directing And in the plaque number two, they have the same, they have the same kind of, you know, pointing the traffic through my, through my, through my lot, through my property. Plus also, in, in, statue of 302, in page 302, statue 14, it will say there that we're not supposed to be barricade our parking lots between our property and my neighbor's property. So what I see is not, you know, an agree, an agree to, to the plan that they submit. So that's the only thing I can say. I mean, they need to come out with a different plan, then something I can probably can be worked out, but I don't see any, any, any way, you know, any...
All right. Thank you very much. We do have commissioners who have some questions for you. Commissioner Spring first.
Yes, since you own the business next to the medical center, what's your opinion about the parking supply at the medical, on the medical center lot? Is it sufficient for the number of clients that come there every day, or is it typically overflow parking onto, into your lot?
In the medical, well, it is, it's been times in the past that they've been short of parking lot, parking spaces there, and one of the managers that was, I can't remember her name right now, she come very times to say, "Well, please tell your customers they don't park in my parking lot, because I'm already full." So it's been some times that the manager of the medical center that was coming to our, and brought us to our attention, that our overparking, our, you know, her parking lot is full, we can tell the customers to park in our parking spaces. And by the way, we put spaces, I mean, in their building, in the medical building, we put signs that say, "Please, Dono says, don't park here." You know, they can park in Dono's parking lot.
Do, my question, I guess, is still, is do they typically overflow? Do they sometimes park in the Dono's parking lot?
I say, from time to time, yes. In the past, it's been happened, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dean?
Through to the chair, my question is of staff, and that's regarding page 302, item number 14. Neither party may erect fences or barricades blocking the parking or access areas referred to herein. Now, this information comes in a document that does or does not affect this case? Can you tell me?
The document that Mr. Ramos refers to is the reciprocal parking and access agreement between the two, two parties. In the document, it allows for overflow parking onto each other's lot. It also allows access from, from the medical building's lot onto Mr. Ramos' property. They each have a one-way traffic flow. So it is, it is, it is something that was submitted for the plan, however, they're not blocking access per se. I mean, they wouldn't be able to access from the, where the tower site is, and it's reducing the parking, but it does, the original plan did block the access to the alley, which would have had an effect on Mr. Ramos' property, because they would have accessed through the lot in a different portion or section of the lot than what was originally, I think, that Mr. Ramos had, had an idea of, but I can't really speak for him, other than that this will add a fence, because they do have to surround the tower site with a fence.
So my question is, does this type of a document affect our ability to make a decision? Is this something we should consider?
It's not an agreement that we're a party to, however, however, you can consider it in your, in your, when you're considering this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. I may have a question for you and staff, so if you could just stay there for a second.
Sure.
I'm trying to flip back and forth between these two site plans, and I admit I'm a little confused that the petitioner originally submits a site plan, and then later, once the appeal comes up, says, "Here, I have another plan, please consider, this is really the one that I want." But as I look on 289, which I think was the original site plan, the first question is, and sir, do you see that on 289? Do you have that in front of you? You know that one? So you come in, the ingress onto his property, and then the egress crosses over, which I presume is your property, and I think what is right now is a row of parking along there. So in order to provide that egress, is it, is it not right to say that Mr. Ramos loses those parking spaces to ensure that there's, that there's egress?
If you look at the aerial photo...
Page, page number?
Hold on, I've got it.
Well, I got one on 217. Does that work for you?
Just an overview of it. You'll see that on that part of the lot, of Mr. Ramos' lot, there is not parking.
There's not an aisle? It's not a double-loaded aisle?
It's not a double-loaded aisle. They both have one-way parking. So, that's why the petitioner in their plan shows, you know, shows the egress coming off of their lot onto Ramos', Mr. Ramos' lot. In the alternative plan, they still show it, but they also have access to the alley, where they can egress onto the alley to Lake Otis, or to the other road to the west. Or they can circle around, come up Mr. Ramos' property, which is an existing condition of the site. And they can go off onto Lake Otis, I mean, not Lake Otis, Northern Light, sorry.
And, okay, that's helpful. And when I look at the parking numbers, what's the required number of off-street parking spaces for the medical office?
The required parking for the medical office is 24 spaces. With that, two, they are showing 28 spaces. So, two accessible spaces are required. They are showing the two accessible spaces.
And so, even if you got rid of, on the original site plan, parking space number 11, which I'm not quite sure how that functions, they're still in excess and still meet the parking requirements? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
But, Mr. Ramos, in your opinion, related to the shared parking agreement or shared access agreement that you have, you believe that item number 14 would be in violation if either of these two site plans were implemented?
Yes, because first time, you know, they indicated exactly where I have to be provided egress and digress. And in an agreement, we don't have any agreement with it, we have to specify exactly where. So, they telling me where I have to do it, where I have to. So, of course, I see, you know, an issue there. I mean, I will not have any problem to, they can cross any place, but not to specify the areas for my property. Because I believe I have the right to decide in my property what parking lots put in there, or not somebody else that come by and tell me what I have to put out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parks?
I've got a couple of quick questions for Mr. Ramos. Can you tell me, when you originally got this parking easement, was it something you requested to do? Or was it, was there a reason that this was developed?
At the time we was negotiating the lot, we tried to make an agreement with the previous owner, the previous owner, regarding if I have access through, across either overflow parking space, an equal, you know, an equal agreement, you know? He can cross my parking, you know, any place, so overflow, yeah.
I'm fairly familiar with parking agreements, and they're generally given when one user has an off time that they use the lot. In your particular case, you're a restaurant, so weekends, evenings would be a heavier parking for you, than it would an office building, which would be normal working hours. Is that one of the reasons you agreed to this and it was done originally?
That's correct.
Okay, good. And then I have one question for staff. We've identified an issue of dumpsters. And I guess I don't see a dumpster on either one of these plans. You say that we have two extra parking spots, one of which may infringe. But is there a dumpster plan, and why aren't they on this plan? And why haven't we identified that as an exception?
Madam Chair, Mr. Parks, the dumpster was inadvertently left off the plan, it appears. The dumpster is located adjacent to the alley.
And which plan are you referring to? 177 or 280?
On 177.
And can you give me an idea of where it's located?
It's adjacent to the alley.
Is it, which space is it going to take?
Behind where the tower location is supposed to be. They would have to move the dumpster, which, well, which could affect their parking.
I'm sorry, I still don't see it. I'm looking at parking spot number seven. Is it directly across from that? Is that what you're saying, outside the fence?
Move, yes, move west on the lot, behind where the proposed tower location is.
How are you gonna have access to a dumpster there?
From the alley. They're gonna have to show that, we can add a condition to show the proposed dumpster and the location of it on the plan. They're gonna have to move the dumpster from behind there.
And I would also assume that staff sees that this fence around this is not going to impede the parking agreement that's already in place?
Well, the parking agreement is between Mr. Ramos and the neighboring property owner. We don't see it impeding access per se, in that they're not blocking, you know, the ability for the medical building to access their lot and onto Mr. Ramos' lot. And Mr. Ramos can still access the medical building's lot. It does, however, decrease the area of access. When we showed this to the municipal surveyor, because I wanted to see what his opinion was as to the document, where did this access actually exist? Did it exist all the way down the lot? Or did it exist just at the front of the lot, or to the back of the lot? And he said that it was an open access agreement between the two properties. And so, there was not a delineated section for the access.
So, someone other than the two people party to this decided that this was open access?
Yes, but I'd like to also make note that Mr. Ramos did not make comments on the previous two cases. So, after the appeal started, was when Mr. Ramos entered into the equation. Otherwise, you know, we would have taken into account if Mr. Ramos had anything to mention or to say about the site.
I would think that if I had a parking agreement with someone, and it was access for 200 yards or 50 yards, that if you cut it in half, that it would be extremely different than what I agreed to. And I guess, maybe I'm using a little bit too much logic in the place. But I have several parking access agreements, and if somebody took half of that away, I would certainly want to be in part of that agreement. Whether I was either the taker or the one that's being taken from, I don't, that changes that agreement dramatically. And I know that the city looks at those kind of things when you go and get permits. They want to see those parking agreements. And it looks like this one is in place. And I'm not sure how we can come up with a plan on unit number 77 without addressing that somehow in the document.
We viewed it as an agreement between the two properties, and we didn't, we knew it had gone out to the public, so we just didn't hear comment back on it.
So, what you're saying, you didn't see that was an important element of this particular location for the cell tower?
If I could step in, this is a private agreement between two parties that the municipality does not enforce, and it's up to the two property owners to ensure that their agreement is being held up.
Thank you.
Through the chair, when I was on the plating board, I had to recognize driveway agreements that people might have with their next-door neighbor. I could not ignore those. I don't, this is, I look at this as essentially a driveway agreement. I'm trying to find the difference between those two things. Now, a driveway agreement may only be on a deed. So, tell me how that would be different.
Madam Chair, Ms. Dean, we are not a party. The municipality of Anchorage is not a party to this private agreement. We will make comment if we are a party to the agreement. And sometimes we do require shared access agreements and shared parking agreements. In this case, since it was not required parking, we didn't require the shared parking agreement. They're just allowing access onto each other's lot and some overflow parking. This is what this agreement does. Plan 177 takes into account the concern of Mr. Ramos. Atlas Towers responded to the concern of Mr. Ramos. He called Atlas Towers. And so, they are now removing that access onto Mr. Ramos' property. They still, this is the existing situation, is to access from the alley onto Mr. Ramos' property. But even if that access were to be cut off, they still have access onto the alley, to Lake Otis, or to the west, onto another lot, or another street.
Forgive me, but I don't know, is this shared parking agreement a recorded document?
It is recorded.
It is a recorded, so it would be, it's a recorded document? It would show up in a title report?
Yes, it would.
Okay. It's not, there are no easements associated with this document? It's simply a parking agreement, an access agreement?
Yes, between the parties.
Between the parties. It is an easement? Is it a private easement? Or? Parking easement and license. I'm not sure if it's, since it is an easement and it is a recorded document, how it can be ignored by the municipality?
If you look at the document itself, either party can actually reverse the document. So, if Mr. Ramos is not happy, he can give notice to the medical park owner, and withdraw the parking agreement, and likewise.
Well, even if that is true, it still shows up in, we're not talking about the content of the document so much as we're talking about the title. And if you would do a property, a legal search, you would find this as a recorded document.
Madam Chair, CCNRs are also recorded documents, and the municipality does not enforce those.
Well, I'm not necessarily talking about the enforcement of those documents as opposed to a recognition, and I think there's a difference. So, thank you. Any other question? All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? Anyone else at all? Anyone else at all wishes to come forward?
I'm Mark Melkert, on behalf of the petitioner, or the applicant, Atlas Tower. And also with me here today is Mr. Nate Foster, who is the principal for Atlas Tower. I think what I'd like to do is, maybe first I'll address the parking, since that seems to be on the mind of the commissioners at the moment. And then maybe I'll wrap back to some of the other points. The access agreement, I think, as the staff recognizes, is a private agreement. I don't think it's a zoning issue. It is not a requirement in the code that Atlas Tower has to meet the terms, whatever they might be, of a private access agreement. The other party to that access agreement, of course, is the owner of the parcel that has entered into an agreement with Atlas Tower for this tower. And so, if there is some disagreement, I think, between Mr. Ramos and the owner of the subject parcel, that is for them to work out. We do not think it's a requirement that this commission review and interpret and imply and determine what the rights and responsibilities of the parties to that agreement are. That's between them. For purposes of this application, all the parking requirements for the code are met, and all the access requirements for the code are met. To answer Mr. Commissioner Robinson's question, the reason why Atlas Tower submitted a revised plan for the access was to address the concerns raised by Mr. Ramos and the community. That's the answer to that question. Atlas Tower has, in multiple ways, sought to meaningfully address the concerns of the community. The evidence that has been submitted with the application to support the application includes an engineering study done that is at 315 and 316 of the packet, that demonstrates for the build-out of Verizon's system, there is a hole, there is a gap, coverage gap, in this area, and that Verizon needs an antenna in this area. In addition, Atlas Tower has a signed letter of intent with ACS, because ACS needs an antenna in this area. Along with the application, Atlas Tower also submitted evidence showing an exhaustive site review. Atlas Tower reviewed over 30 sites in an effort to locate the best site for placement of a tower to support these antennas to provide service in this area. The code that has been adopted by the municipality does not require that every possible site be excluded. It requires that the applicant demonstrate that there are no existing structures to support the antennas in lieu of citing a tower. Atlas Tower has addressed each of the, looks like I'm just about done. Could I ask the chair's deference?
Yes. Commissioner Ferguson, did you wish to? All right. Thank you very much. Please continue.
The application specifically addressed each of the existing towers in the area, and demonstrated why they are not suitable. The application also goes in-depth into the technologies about microcell technology, and why that does not provide an alternative for citing additional antennas in this area in order to provide service that the application demonstrates is needed. With respect to, a couple others, I think the staff is correct. You know, one, there's no real evidence for the commission to say there's an effect on property value. But that's not a requirement of the code that has been adopted by our assembly. At the last, with respect to the height, at the last heating, simply for clarification, Atlas Tower actually proposed reduction of the height to 80 feet. It did not insist that 100 feet was the only workable solution. What it told the commissioners was that any further reduction would have a significant impact on co-location. And co-location is one of the laudatory, you know, objectives and goals of the code, to locate as many antennas, you know, to build as few towers as possible, basically, to support the infrastructure that the community needs. So, the reduction to 66 feet is technologically necessary from Atlas Tower's perspective. But the reason why it's reduced is it puts us squarely within the requirements of the code for citing a tower in a B1A district. A tower is a permitted accessory use. Let me just see. And I think that's all I have, unless the commissioners have additional questions.
We do. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I have three questions, I think. I think in your application, you mentioned that typically you will bond for the removal of a tower as part of the application process. And I don't believe I saw that as one of the conditions of approval in the staff recommendation. Would you object to that kind of condition?
No, we wouldn't have, we would have no objection to that condition.
Second question, on the location of the tower that's on the site plan on page 177. You have a rectangular area there for the tower location, for the tower footprint with accessory equipment and whatever. Why is the tower located in the, closer to the alley and not further towards Northern Light Boulevard?
It would please the commission, I would ask Mr. Foster to answer that technical Nathan Foster, Atlas Tower. Your question, okay. As mentioned, we're a company that builds multi-use towers, and so we have three equipments... we have three equipment compounds outlined inside our compound. And so, uh, it's, it's really not a, it doesn't matter to us if, if there's two compounds on one side versus another compound on the other. In other words, shifting the larger compound to the Northern Lights side and the two smaller compounds to the alley side, doesn't matter.
But there would, would be a problem then if the all three, um, containers or, or enclosures were moved to the south towards the alley and the pole was at the northern end of the compound?
We, we, we would have to have one, uh, equipment compound on the Northern Lights Structurally speaking, if you care, uh, monopoles have ports that enter the bottom and you can't have too many holes on one side of a tower. Uh, so it makes it look cleaner and neater to have cables going in at the very bottom of a tower, um, in separate ports.
And my last question is with, with respect to the testimony we heard regarding stealth tower technology that might be available and might have been used in other parts of the country. What's your experience with that and what's your opinion about the, um, susceptibility on your part for that type of design?
Sure. I, I appreciate that question. Um, I've been doing this a long time and, and yes, I have used stealth applications in the past. I have never used them in a climate like Anchorage. And if you looked in the information that was provided, the pictures of stealth trees are from southern climates. If you look at all of those photos, they're California and Florida. Uh, that's where most of what I've done comes from also. The cost of a stealth tree is enormous in a climate like this, so it's not what was quoted in some of the information you have. There's also a safety component and an aesthetic component in a climate like this. And I say that because the branches of a fake tree are not branches of a real tree, so they break, they don't bend when there's snow and ice. And so every winter and multiple times in the winter, there will be broken branches, there will be branches falling off the tree that are heavier than a normal tree branch. And the, at the end of a, a winter, us, I have never seen a stealth tree successful in a climate like this. We've done other types of stealth. We've done stealth silos, we've done stealth rocks in places where, well, obviously, I mean, we, there are certain types of stealth that were, that would work here, but I don't think it necessarily would be something you would want. Uh, and I think that on the, the, kind of the aesthetic piece of this question, we are putting a monopole in amongst many other monopoles or other, other utility poles that are all along this road, so from a visual perspective, it probably blends in better than a, than a tree would. So there's, there's multiple, sorry, there's multiple answers to that question.
Commissioner Ferguson? Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, thank you. On, uh, response to petitioner's notice of appeal, it talked about Atlas, uh, the, the, the petitioner indicated or felt that Atlas had not adequately checked other sites for proposed monopole, and, and the staff response says, "Petitioner indicates that UAA offered to allow for a camouflage or hidden tower at the university. However, no documentation has been submitted that indicate a lease agreement was approved or denied." I, I understand your point, sir, about not necessarily having to explore every endless possibility, but this would seem to suggest that there might be, uh, there might have been an opportunity. Could you address that, please?
Sure. Uh, and I didn't mean to, I think, as I started, Atlas Tower actually in this case, because this area that, that has an identified coverage gap is filled with residential, um, developments. Uh, there are not that many areas that you can cite a tower that will not impact some residential area. That's just the way the neighborhood is constructed. And in fact, Atlas Tower did spend significant time, uh, talking to UAA. Uh, it met with the senior property manager for, I think, over an hour and a half, and, but as a result of that, there was no success in achieving any agreement with the university. Uh, also, the university site has its own problems because if further you move onto the university site, you start impacting the, the technological capacity of that location to provide the service in the coverage gap. Uh, if you look at the, um, propagation map at 315, uh, you will see the circles and, and how a network, a cell network works to provide coverage. And it is pretty critical that the towers are located in an area to maximize the coverage, um, that the carriers need.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
I had, I had one more.
All right. Please.
Um, I heard in testimony, and forgive me if I missed it, but an indication that perhaps at Shriners, there's a tower, it's quite a bit, sounded like quite a bit smaller or shorter, um, is that, is that a, could you maybe comment on, I, I, on the known height of that, uh, tower, whether you approached them for, um, using that location, again, trying to minimize the number of towers in this particular neighborhood?
Yeah. Let, let me speak to that, 'cause that's actually a good, a great question. Here's who has talked to us about our tower. ACS, GCI, AT&amp;T, and Verizon. Verizon is our anchor tenant. ACS and GCI, prior to them announcing their marriage, this speaks to two questions, were both interested in our site, and now it's going to be one of them, not the other. And AT&amp;T, who has antennas nearby, is also talking to us about our site. So that tower isn't working for its tenant and either is the rooftop across the street. And part of why they're not working is because they were designed for the voice generation of wireless, which was ten years ago. And now we have a problem across the country called data, and it means that the old infrastructure is not sufficient to work for the online gaming and the internet and, you know, what, what we were all doing while we were waiting in this room. That's what's happening at every intersection in every home, and so, so the old infrastructure's not working, and so to speak specifically to that question about that tower, it doesn't work, and I, and I don't know if it's, I think it's an ACS tower. They want on this tower, so it doesn't work. It's too small. It, it works when the voice technology can kind of feather through trees and buildings, but with data, you have to be more exact and you have to be a little bit higher because it's not as flexible hitting obstacles, and therefore it, it doesn't work.
And, and so I don't know if this speaks to, uh, what Commissioner Spring was talking about bonding for the removal of towers, but how, how does, how does one go about removing obsolete ISORS?
Um, I think we asked the petitioner that question, or?
If it's petitioner's staff, but if anyone has any insight.
Yeah. Commissioner? Spring?
I, are you looking for me?
We, we, we do do removal bonds. We're, we're happy with doing that on our sites. Of course, not everybody has that, uh, but in, on many of our new towers, we have removal bonds that, you know, at least in our case, if it becomes unused, it'll come down. The old stuff, um, you know, that would be getting the owner of that tower to, to oblige, and often bodies like this have that kind of leverage, I might add.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Spring and then Commissioner Parks.
Yeah, just to follow up, I guess, I didn't realize that, that tower might be obsolete if ACS moves to the other tower, and it seems to me that the neighborhood probably doesn't deserve to have two towers in it that, um, could be, considered to be of blight on the property values, and I think it makes sense then to, if it is going to be the main tower and is going to improve service, then maybe there's an obligation to, um, see how we can remove the other tower. There's no reason to have two of them there.
I would, I would say too, though, that if our tower or any, so we, we talked about all the carriers interested in our tower and who are going, Verizon and, and ACS/GCI, um, they all have needs, and so you can't exclude one from the other, and often we have conversations about, you know, four smaller towers versus one bigger one, and, you know, that's a, a valid conversation. I think moving forward and, and part, part of what I've gone through in my career and with my company, Atlas, which by the way, we're a small company, not a big one, um, we try and educate folks. I, I mean, in the past, things weren't done right, and I was part of that past, but now I feel like my company tries to say what I'm saying to you, and we don't know what's coming next, but we do know that data is, is going up and up and up, and there's not really an end to it. So if you, if we design the right kind of towers now or right kind of infrastructure, at least for the next ten years, we won't have a discussion about vacant towers. I mean, our towers will come down and, um, I have a, I have a great relationship with GCI and ACS, and, uh, I don't know what their policy is with removing towers, but this isn't the first time they've come onto our sites and left old ones behind. I don't really have an answer except that I can have that conversation.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Commissioner Robinson, I think I can address a couple of those. I have six towers on property that I own in the city, and I've had, uh, I've had one taken down, and I've got another one that'll be taken down in the next two weeks. They can take those down in a matter of days. I mean, within three days, they had it removed, and you would have never known it was there, so it's not, it's not under, uh, utilized. And the, the ones that I have had replaced have gone from sixty-six foot towers to a hundred-foot tower, exactly for the reason they're talking about, is that they wanted multi-use on it, and they could put three or four users on a hundred-foot tower or sixty-foot tower, they could only get two users on because there has to be separation. So I, I got all that, and I, and I do understand it, and I'm sympathetic to it. I'm also sympathetic to the people who have to have those towers in their backyard. This, our land happens to be B3, all of it, and it's sitting in the back, and there's, you know, they, their footprint is four hundred feet because they're using space inside the building for all their equipment. And it, it's a, um, it's a, it's a, if you want a cell phone and you want data, you're going to have to go higher, and you're going to have to be able to serve more. And I, I appreciate their attitude about putting more users on a tower rather than having more towers. I, I got that. I'm a little concerned about, I'm really concerned more about how it's being, the process is being put in place than I am about the process itself. Uh, I think that, uh, that's one of my concerns that I have in this, in this whole deal, so I hope that helped a little bit.
Thank you. Uh, Jillian?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, under the code, if a tower is abandoned or an antenna structure is abandoned for a period of twelve months, then it shall be considered abandoned and the owner is to remove it. Now, we can do an enforcement action, uh, on the property owner to have the tower removed, uh, if need be, or we can remove it at, uh, the owner's expense.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Are there any other question, questions at this time? Seeing and hearing none, thank you. And the petitioner has, uh, five minutes and forty-five seconds. Is there no more public testimony? I was assuming there was not, but let me check that out one more time. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? All right. Thank you.
Um, again, if you'd look back at your, uh, red folder that I provided, um, on the last, uh, statement, uh, if you go to the, um, last page or page five of the document, it does indicate that, uh, Verizon has, uh, put a cell tower, a camouflage cell tower in Bozeman, Montana just recently. I have, uh, spoken to the, uh, one specific, uh, camouflage company that indicated that, you know, this concealment solution would work very well in Alaska. And Verizon has done it in many other, uh, communities throughout the United States. The neighborhood has asked, uh, that it happened and they did it. They said that they don't want to be, uh, unwelcome, uh, and so some sort of camouflage, uh, I think has to happen if you're going to approve this, uh, tower. Having it painted brown and putting some, they put spruce trees in front of it, is not going to camouflage it in any way or make it look any better. Um, if you look at, uh, the first tab, tab one, um, we, I wrote to Jeff Lowenfels, and he basically says, "If you're going to put spruce trees, uh, in pavement," and, uh, the, uh, fellow who's in charge of maintenance and operations, Alan Zirkowski, he indicates that the alley is going to be paved next year, and so these trees are not going to last if they're requested by your landscaping ordinances to put them in, and he's saying, "You better get some kind of, um, uh, verification that they'll be taken care of for a number of years." So one, your landscaping things, in my estimation, aren't going to, uh, help. And, uh, on, again, page one in the beginning, I did speak with Brian Vanderwood, who is the general foreman for the municipality. Page one, you'll see it's, uh, footnoted on three that he stipulated definitely two would be taken, and he chose the back two of the six, uh, parking spaces that are against the alley where the snow is right now. And so if Title 21 goes through and you have your, um, dumpsters in some sort of an enclosure, you could be having more than two parking spaces taken up for them to come down. Our fence in the back on the other side of the alley has been hit at least three times, and they're high and they're rounded, and it's just like what the, um, back end of the, uh, waste management has. Something you can't prove, we fix it, and it gets hit again. So the alley is narrow, you can't get two cars down the alley, it's a one-way, uh, alley, so having them do their garbage, uh, up against the alley and some of the problems that may impact with that, we believe is still a problem. You're, uh, you're still looking at, uh, the number of parking spaces, especially with the garbage and in the snow, and even if they remove it, um, it's still a problem. Uh, Attachment Four is showing that our, uh, MLMP poles down the alley are actually twenty-nine and a half feet, um, and if you're putting a sixty-six foot tower, it, it's just a, a, an ISOR, basically, a, a high, um, item that just doesn't look like it belongs in the area, whether you're looking at it from Northern Lights or you're looking at it from your neighborhood. Um, hiding this, hiding the tower is something that is, is a workable thing. I think that if, if, uh, you deny our appeal, uh, you should at least consider sending it back to planning to allow us to discuss with planning and with Verizon, uh, a way to try and make it better for the community. Um, the Verizon has done it in other, uh, communities. We, as, uh, an Anchorage municipality, um, should think of the future. If you look on the, um, third page of it, you can see that, um, there's a number of towers just within that area. It's showing, uh, hundreds of towers. And so thinking of the skyline of Anchorage, thinking of people who come to visit, thinking of the residents who are here, I think that we, we at least, uh, should have something that is indicating something better than what your landscaping ordinances are to deal with towers, because they're going to go up, and it doesn't seem that our ordinance system is, is helping other than landscaping. You do have the ability to send this back to planning and indicate to them, uh, better landscaping, uh, better, uh, discussion with the fencing that the two property owners are now going to have to deal with. Fourteen does say, uh, uh, in that agreement that there shall be no fences, no barricades. You can't have the tower without the fence, so you're just causing, uh, these two property owners to have to go into some sort of, uh, uh, legal, um, um, legal problem that, uh, they shouldn't have to do. Um, the, um, the community in, in itself believes and, and the, has said many times. I can take my goodness for the community council if you'd like. I represent the Rogers Park Community Council.
The time for Commissioner Ferguson.
Thank you. The community council is a broad spectrum of people who meet that aren't just in our area where this tower is, they're widespread. Three times, they have had a resolution go through denying it, with 100-foot, the 66-foot, and they also have passed one that indicates that they would, at the very least, like to see some camouflage to it, something more than the spruce trees and the fencing. Painting it brown and putting trees in front of it is not the answer. And the paperwork that I did hand to you does show that the university is willing to deal with the Verizon. They're in, the last two weeks, I believe it is, they've discussed with the university for different sites. The university's identified two sites. The document indicates that they would continue to deal with the idea of camouflaging or stealth towers. And that's still to be seen on whether or not they would accept the tower. But Mr. McMasters, who is the person that Verizon spoke with, basically indicated that it looks promising. And so the map that is shown for the, excuse me, for the coverage on page 315 and 316, 315 specifically showing the blank area, the Goose Lake, it would be further to the north, it would cover that blank white area that is to the east. And for the other area, it's just as easy to go down on the northern area, which would be DeBar. And that's where Metrofield is, they have lots of towers, and it could be an alternative area. So whether it's a pine tree or not, we were, I don't, I want to hand you another piece of paper here, but I do have verification from the camouflage area, that camouflage company, that if they were to put this 66-foot tree camouflage on, and Verizon had their antenna, that they can also add the other two co-location towers afterwards. These metal poles are welded, the branches are welded onto these poles. I think in your large document, pages 254 and 255 are basically showing that these trees are holding, hidden as much as nine antennas. So it is, it does happen, it's happened in cold areas, it's not like Alaska is much colder than Fair, I can't say Fairbanks, but Montana, and Verizon has agreed to do it there. I hate to see the municipality be behind the curve here, just because our ordinance are a little off. I think that Title 21 should have had something to do with cell towers.
That's beyond us tonight. I mean, we're trying to solve the issue here, and we're not gonna solve all the problems. My question, you don't, you question the planning, is whether the planning is enough, you question the fencing, do you have any specific alternatives that you would propose?
For the tower? Yeah, put it over at the university, if they want it.
To myself, that's not the issue before us tonight, okay? I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work very hard with a community that feels very, very sincere, with a developer that has a by-right development, and due to circumstances beyond, anybody in this room, there's this conflict here, and I'm trying to understand it, and I'm trying to resolve it. And I'm trying to, you know, you said, send it back to planning and have them do some things. Planning works very hard on this, we may not always agree with it, but I mean, we've got roughly 400 pages of paper up here, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to this. And so my final question is, do you have any specifics for the fencing, or specifics for the landscaping?
Well, if you turn to page three, or the-
Tab three.
Tab three in the thing, it's fairly specific that they can put antenna socks on the 5-foot and 8-foot antennas, that they can put an antenna branch in front of it, that they can make it look somewhat like a tree. You can see through the attachment three and the number of pages, it does show it behind houses, it does show it near buildings, and it happens in other cities.
Now, this makes the antenna mass much larger. You heard Mr. Potter talk about mass earlier. This takes a 3-foot tower with some wings, and makes it probably eight or nine feet. Now, does that, I mean, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and I'm trying to understand whether that's an improvement or a disadvantage.
Having it look like a pine tree as opposed to three cell towers sticking up there, like you can see on five, tab five? I believe so.
Okay, I mean, you talk about the height, the power lines on Northern Lights are 65 feet, according to MLMP, right?
They are 65, there are some that are 38.
The ones right in front of this, where we're talking about, are 65 feet.
65 and 1/2 on Northern Lights.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much for your testimony, the public hearing is now closed. Jillian?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just want to make a couple of quick comments. The appraisal information, the municipal assessor did comment on page 229, you can take a look at what he says about the property values. You've already looked at the pole heights, and there's some information about the building permit and the fall-down distance on page 221. In regard to the landscaping, we are, it's buffer landscaping, 10-foot wide with buffer landscaping in accordance with code, that is a condition of approval. I have no other comments at this time.
All right, thank you very much. What is the wish of the commission at this time? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, in case number 2013004, appeal of administrative approval of a site plan review for a tower located in vicinity of 2100 East Northern Lights Boulevard, I make a positive motion that we deny the existing appeal and approve the tower.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Robinson has been seconded. I'm assuming are these with the conditions as proposed by the planning department?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to add two other conditions, if I could please, would be add a 72-hour for snow removal on this lot because of lack of space, and a number 11 that would ask them to identify the location and of the dumpster.
All right. And Commissioner Robinson, are those conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Are there any other amendments to the conditions? Commissioner Spring?
Yes, I'd like to make amendment. Point of order, please. I've got a main motion, I've got an amendment from, well, a motion with changes from Commissioner Parks, and this is a second amendment from, I'm sorry, you have a new amendment, so this one's recorded and on the floor, I'm sorry, we're on the same-
We're good.
We're good.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, Madam Chair, can I make three-
Amendments?
Three conditions of amendments to change the conditions of approval, as proposed by staff.
All right, we need to take those one at a time.
Okay. The first, and I lost my page, Jillian, oh, sorry, I lost my page, regarding the wording regarding the north versus the south property line that you indicated in one of the conditions, and I, sorry, I couldn't find that right off the map.
Madam Chair, can I ask, he speaks, we can't hear you down here when you turn away from your mic, thank you.
Sorry.
All right.
Amendment number one is to change one of the conditions of approval as proposed by staff regarding the wording, north versus south property line-
Right, okay.
-to the landscaping.
Okay, so I think we need to take these one at a time, I have a second to that amendment. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing and hearing none, that amendment is approved. Commissioner Spring, you have a second amendment, another amendment?
Second amendment is regarding the site plan, location of the monopole, requiring a condition that would revise the site plan to move the pole as far north as, within the fenced area as possible, with one of the encasements containing the equipment moved to the south, and only one remaining encasement between the pole and the north fence of the antenna area. Is that too confusing?
No. Is there a second to that motion? Well, he has made it in the form of a motion. Yeah, all right, thank you. And so Commissioner Ferguson, you have seconded that. Thank you. Is there an objection to this motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Commissioner Spring, you have a third.
Amendment number three involving another change to the conditions of approval, requiring bonding agreement to remove the monopole from the site upon abandonment of the use of the antenna.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to the motion? It's been seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is there objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is also approved. Jillian, you have a comment?
Madam Chair, apologize for interrupting. I want to be sure which site plan the commission is considering.
That's a very good question.
Is it on page?
179, or?
179.
Or 177?
Yes, I think we should clarify.
All right, is that, that was your, from your main motion? It is page 177, and that motion was seconded by Commissioner Robinson, if I recall correctly? Was it, who made the second?
Yes, I had seconded the root of the motion.
Yes, and is that, is that the site plan?
Well, I think if I have any more additions to the site plan, I want to see a site plan before I sign off on the entire, the entire site. I think we're adding things to the particular site plan, and we still have not yet resolved the access agreement, that still appears to be a conflict between the two property owners, that at a minimum needs to be resolved, or rewritten, because the site plan, whichever one we choose, is in direct violation of it.
So are you, you are not going to support the motion, is that my understanding? Or you are asking for postponement?
So keep me on as a second.
Okay.
I do, I guess I, I'd like to introduce a motion, and that motion would be that the, that the petitioner amend the site plan to also reflect a condition that represents some sort of agreement with the adjacent property owner relative to their parking agreement. Now, whether that means amending the parking agreement, or amending the site plan. So I'd like, my motion is to amend the site plan to reflect a revised agreement with the adjacent property owner.
Is there a second to that motion? That motion has been seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there an objection to the motion? But I'm just trying to clarify here, basically, what that means is we're looking for a postponement. Commissioner Parks, you're in the queue, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you started all this.
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a comment, I'd like to speak to this. Though I believe that it's a very important thing, the parking agreement, I think it's through two, through two different, two parties, that is a civil matter, not a matter that should be in front of us. We are simply looking at what the code says about putting a tower on that lot, and they meet the requirements. Now, I'm not saying I agree with it, I ask a lot of questions about that parking agreement because I think it's very, very important, but I don't think we're here to adjudicate that, that particular issue. And I think that's something that may hold this building up if they elect to go that direction. So I will not be supporting this motion.
Commissioner Robinson, are you back in the queue, or was this?
That was from before, but I'm happy to speak to my motion if I like. I understand what Commissioner Parks is saying, on the other hand, I see the conditions that are written under 2150-280C, and that includes a nature of uses on adjacent and nearby properties, the design of the structure, with how it affects other properties, proposed ingress and egress, and frankly, I'm growing increasingly uncomfortable with a site plan that frankly seems inadequate for all the things that we'd like to see in order to have an approved tower.
Thank you. Commissioner Spring, you were, you were in the queue, and then you got out of the queue, is?
Well, Madam Chair, yes, I have one more amendment.
All right.
But I didn't want to interrupt.
Hold that thought, hold that thought. All right. So Commissioner Robinson has made an amendment, seconded by Ms. Dean, to, in essence, postpone this case until a new site plan comes back to us, is that my understanding?
No, I think, I think that we've asked on a number of these conditions to revise the site plan to take care of a number of things, right? One is the location of dumpsters, we've asked for a movement of a tower farther north. I'd simply ask that, that the site plan be revised to reflect, and not be in conflict with a parking agreement, that's a recorded document and frankly, part of the public record here. And you could do that one of two ways, you can revise the site plan somehow to accommodate that, or you could revise the parking agreement.
So you're not asking for us to, as the commission, to see it again, you're just putting these additional conditions on?
That's my intent.
All right, okay, all right, I got that. All right, thank you. There is an objection to this motion, and so we should use our voting machines. Yes vote supports the motion, and no vote is for denial.
And that's the amendment?
The amendment, that is correct. That motion carries.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Which part do you push, let me ask you?
All right.
Where's my voting?
I don't see it, so if you will just announce.
Madam Chair, I'd like to announce that I vote in favor of the motion.
All right, thank you very much. So we have three, four, five, yes, six yeses, so that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Spring?
Yes, Madam Chair, one more amendment, as a condition of approval, I would like to add that approval is contingent upon an agreement for the removal of the tower that is currently located on the Shriner property to the west of the proposed tower location. And I would like to, if I could have help from the staff to designate what the property lot is, so that it- the property lot is, so that it's more-
I'm not sure that is a, a amendment that is applicable to this particular case that's in front of us, but I will ask staff to confirm that.
Madam Chair, Atlas Towers does not own the AT&amp;T Tower. Therefore, the, the condition puts a burden on Atlas Tower that may not be possible, plus it is on a different lot entirely. This site is, is, does not involve that Shriner's Tower.
I would like to speak to my motion, please.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spring.
Well, I think, in reading the tower ordinance, it seems clear that one of the intent of it was to try to co-locate towers and sell antennas as much as possible on a single tower. And I think the idea was to try to reduce the multiplication of towers everywhere in this community, and especially where it's located very close together. And as we heard from the petitioner, you know, the, the technology is changing rapidly, and we have to have a way to make sure that the old towers, the obsolete towers are removed. And if this is a, indeed, as the petitioner said, this is an improvement needed to increase the data volume and flow from cell phones and tablets, then the existing tower that's on the, on the Shriner property is obsolete. And we have to have a way to start to find a way to, to eliminate them as new towers, which supposedly are needed to replace those, are put in place. And I think personally that the number of, two towers adjacent to a neighborhood so close together is an undue burden on that neighborhood. One tower, if this is an improvement, I will vote in favor of it, but it has to have a contingent condition that removes the obsolete tower, for, for my vote.
Well, I appreciate that. I don't necessarily disagree with you theoretically. I don't, however, I do agree with staff that it's not a party, it's not an amendment applicable to this particular case. Commissioner Robinson?
I, I understand what Commissioner Spring is trying to do, and them struggling with the mechanism in which we can do it as well. And I, I think, I, I wonder if the commission would consider a condition upon Atlas Tower that should ACS choose to co-locate on that tower, that a condition of their co-location be that they dismantle the other tower, acknowledging that they have, they have, otherwise have no ties to the other tower. If ACS wants on, they got to play.
Jillian.
Madam Chair, it's AT, I believe it's AT&amp;T that's on the Shriner's Tower. But when you look at the code, if, if the tower becomes abandoned or obsolete, basically it's not in use, then by code, they're required to remove the tower. And we do have the enforcement capability in the code to do that. When I think about this, if we, if we take another property and include it in on this agreement, we're moving close to a potential appeal in Superior Court on this case.
Thank you. I concur with staff's position on this matter. Did you want to, Mr., Commissioner Spring, put your comment into the form of an amendment? After this discussion?
I would like to change my amendment to reflect the recommendation by Commissioner Robinson. I think I'd be satisfied, I guess, if indeed, as what staff says, that what I, my motion was potentially contrary to the law, that an alternative would be to require the dismantlement of the other tower if indeed the carriers switch to the new tower.
I appreciate the intent here. I do have to say, I agree with staff. We have code enforcement for those matters, but we're certainly willing to entertain a motion. Commissioner Robinson, is it your intent to create a motion here?
No, no, I just had to ask a question of staff. How do you know if a tower's abandoned?
They, the, the, the tower companies are required to submit tower inventories each year, and if we receive word that a tower's abandoned, then, then we know. That's, that's really the only way we know, is if we receive information that a tower is abandoned.
Have you ever received information that a tower was abandoned?
The ACS tower that was proposed down near Potter's Marsh on the Chuck's Back Hole had to remove one tower to increase the height of another tower. And so, they did, they're required to remove the existing tower. So, a lot of times, the, the community polices themselves, but if we receive word that a tower has been abandoned, we would certainly move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Spring.
Madam Chair, I'll withdraw my motion.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, are there any other amendments to the motion? All right. So, we're back to the main motion. Commissioner Parks, would you repeat your main motion? I was gonna get you.
Several amendments to it. Secretary, would you like to read it back to us?
Yeah. All right. Here we go.
All right. I will give it a shot. Give me one second to give back to the main motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of order, Jill, if the secretary could please pull the mic close so everybody can hear.
Gotcha. No problem.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We began, we began with a motion by Commissioner Parks, seconded by Commissioner Robinson, to deny the existing appeal and approve the tower with conditions, and add 72 hours for snow removal on that lot because of lack of space, and condition 11, ask them to identify the location of the dumpster. And there was a clarification that we were referring to the site plan on page, was it 179? 177. Okay. From there, there was a motion that was approved to amend the commission, the condition seven is the correct condition, to change the wording from north to south of the property line. There was a motion to amend regarding the site plan location of the monopole, requiring a condition that would revise the site plan to move the pole as far north in the fenced area as possible, with one of the encasement containing equipment moved to the south, and only one remaining encasement between the pole and the north fence of the antenna area, which was put forward by Commissioner Spring and seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Is that correct, Commissioner Spring?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And that, and that amendment passed. The next amendment was to add a condition by Commissioner Spring and seconded by Commissioner Ferguson, requiring bonding agreement to remove the monopole from the site. And I believe there were a couple of words added, but that was the gist, if it was abandoned, or I don't know if you used that word, I'm sorry, but it had to do with removing the pole from the site. And that was passed. Then, there was another motion from Commissioner Robinson and seconded by Commissioner Dean to amend the motion that, to include that the petitioner amend the site plan to also reflect a condition that represents some sort of revised agreement with the adjacent property owner. And that amendment passed.
I'm not sure-
There was some clarification and discussion after that, because you asked for some confirmation, and there was some discussion. And there was a motion, as a condition of approval, would like to add that the approval be contingent upon the agreement for the removal of the tower. That was the final one.
Can we go back to the second to the last motion regarding the resolution or a new agreement regarding the-
That the petitioner amend the site plan to also reflect a condition that represents some sort of revised agreement with the adjacent property owner?
Regarding access and parking? Yes. Regarding, according to Commissioner Robinson?
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's to amend the site plan and/or the parking agreement so that they're not in conflict.
Right.
And that's in my notes section.
All right. This is a very important amendment. This, without this amendment, I am not going to be in favor of the motion, of the, of the main motion. So, I just want real clarity on this issue.
I guess I'll-
Commissioner-
Could I restate it?
Yes. Yes.
That, that the petitioner amend the site plan and/or the parking agreement so that they are not in conflict. Because as we've discussed now, they are currently in a, in conflict.
Yes.
Or so that they are in agreement.
So that they're in agreement. Yes. All right. And for that clarification, for this amendment, is everybody in agreement?
I, I need to-
See, everybody's not. All right. Thank you.
And if I might, that's consistent with what I do recall of the discussion after.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, now we are back to the main motion for approval. Commissioner Robinson?
I just want to be sure that we are, we are voting in the affirmative to deny the appeal.
That is correct.
That's how this is worded.
That is how this is working. All right. Yes, to deny the appeal, which approves the director's recommendation for approval of the cell tower with the new conditions that we have placed on it this evening. All right. Thank you. Would you please use your machines?
Madam Chair, I vote in the affirmative.
All right. Thank you. That motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. I am going to, for the benefit of those in the audience, read the appeal rights one more time. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. Thank you all very much for your participation this evening. All right. Don't, don't pack up quite yet, because we did move on the consent agenda, D1A resolution, resolution 2013-003 related case, 2013-001, request for a conditional use for a 36-unit residential planned unit development called Raven's Roost. May I have a motion for approval? Commissioner Parks?
Madam Chair, a motion to approve.
Thank you. And it's been seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there any objection to this item on the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Now, I would like to remind you all that we have a director's luncheon at noon in this location this coming Thursday, and I would hope to see all of you there. All right. Is there, there are no appearance requests? That is my only report from the chair. May I have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Parks?
A mission to, a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Let me, I have a little, any objections? None. But before I, I close the meeting, how many of you are available for a meeting on Monday night? Some of you have Juan, Ferguson, Tyler, John, and Stacy. All right. And I believe Peter Malki will be back with a suntan, and hopefully Dana Prue's will be feeling better. Thank you very much. All right. Oh, Dana will not be here. All right. All right. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.